Testing.
He says, I think it's working now.
Check, check, one, two, one, two.
Frank, are we on YouTube?
Check, check, one, two, two, three.
Ready? Same song. The meeting of the council will resume. We are on Roman numeral six, Budget Public Comment Period. Ms. Mala, would you please come forward and state your name and address? I have my timer set, okay? Thank you.
You got time?
I've got it. Thank you.
Laura Mala, 262 Linwood Drive in Richlands, excuse me. At the last meeting, the council directed the town manager to hold another public hearing, yet here we are with no public hearing. You can call it what you want, but this is not a properly advertised public hearing, meaning citizens weren't given adequate notice to participate tonight. I'm sure you'll say it doesn't matter because you already held a public hearing, but only two members of the council were in attendance. Two hadn't been appointed yet. The entire point of the public hearing is so that you can hear the public. We have another regularly called meeting on May 24th. The right thing to do here is to call a properly notified public hearing and let the public speak to the full council after being given adequate notice in the newspaper. In the event that we don't do that, I'll continue with what I would have said at the public hearing. Once again, we have a sitting council member on the delinquent tax list. Ethically, you should not be sitting on this council and shouldn't be voting on our budget. I'm asking you to not only pay your delinquent taxes if you're going to choose to be on the council, but also to abstain from voting on this budget and any tax rate fee or increase. I spoke to you guys a few months ago regarding the collection of delinquent taxes. I was asked about it again recently and said I would bring it to the council. There is a company, TACS, that would collect the delinquencies. Abingdon just implemented the use of TACS last month. TACS is a law firm in Virginia that assists government entities in managing accounts, receivables, and revenue cycles. We have such a large amount of delinquent taxes, some dating back 20 years, and we are losing the ability to collect on these taxes because of the statute of limitations. The cost incurred by using TACS is added to the bill of the delinquent taxes, so this will cost the town nothing. It will also ensure a fair, unbiased collection of taxes based on the length of delinquency as well as the amount. I hope you'll consider using TACS to help collect the delinquent taxes. Otherwise, it's unfair to expect citizens to continue to pay higher rates when we won't even try to collect on the ones who don't pay now. And please do not raise any taxes and fees right now. It's unnecessary. Put the time in to fix this budget without raising anything. Raising the taxes without fixing the budget is taking the easy way out. Please don't do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now we are on to Roman numeral seven, Scheduled Public Comments. Ms. Mala, you're listed as a speaker miscellaneous, five minutes. Somebody will give you five minutes, please. Thank you.
Laura Mala, 262 Linwood Drive. First, I need to address the resolution on the agenda for tonight. Given the threats that citizens are receiving for speaking out against the state of the town, I'm asking that you guys remove the requirement of stating your address at the podium. Stating the town where you live should suffice at this point. Also, taking away the ability to sign up prior to a meeting should be reconsidered. Lately, the doors are locked until just before entering the meeting, and then you have to stand in line to sign up on the sheet if it's out there when you come in. Both of these things I've discussed are discouraging to citizens who want to speak. The goal of this council should be not only to welcome public participation, but to encourage it with easy access. Please do not pass the resolution tonight. We need to make things easier for citizens to participate. Another thing to be addressed is a swearing-in of the IDA members. Virginia Code 15.2-4904 requires that each member of the IDA be sworn in by the clerk of the court prior to taking their seats. However, a majority of our IDA members are not sworn in, making the business conducted by the IDA null for only God knows how long. This is a huge problem for the town, considering the council has given quite a bit of federally given money to the IDA, which they are about to disperse. Virginia Code 15.2-4907 also requires a fiscal impact statement before the money is granted to the IDA, which was not presented prior to the money being promised.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're now on Roman numeral eight, Unscheduled Public Comments. And let me refer to the public comments sheet. This is for three minutes. And Ms. Mala, would you please be the timekeeper?
Yes.
Okay. First, we have Morgan Earp. Morgan, would you please come forward and state your name and address for the benefit of the record, please?
Morgan Earp, 1618 Sixth Street. Before I start reading this paper, I'm gonna have to agree with Laura. You don't know how many threats have been made towards me. Now, bear in mind, I don't care. They can come at me all they want. It's not gonna stop me. Now, the people of this town have suffered under poor leadership by council. Not only do people suffer from the high taxes that the council burdens them with, but also with the willful ignorance to not listen to the people's cry for help. This government ignores its citizens while it lines its own pockets with the money of citizens who can barely afford to survive with little income they are receiving. It is disgusting for this government to watch its people suffer. Let it be known, on this day, I, Morgan L. Earp, as a citizen of the town of Richlands and a citizen of the state of Virginia, will use the constitutional right bestowed upon me by the State General Assembly to ask the citizens to invoke Article One, Section Three of the Virginia Bill of Rights under the Virginia Constitution to reform the town of Richlands for causes of malapinnostration. And should majority of the populace present so choose to invoke, the town of Richlands will be reformed best suited for the people. That's all I can say. Mr. Mayor, do you understand what I ask?
I do. And I will say thank you. And all I can respond to for that, Morgan, is defer to the attorney to comment on your invoking of a constitutional... It's an amendment?
Yes.
Amendment.
Your Honor, as legal counsel, we would need time to review that prior to giving a legal opinion on that here today.
Okay. Morgan?
May I make this aware? That so if council, this government so not choose to enforce what I ask, this is a constitutional rights problem and will be brought towards the states. But if you do choose to enforce this, then the fate of this town will lie in its people. That's all I can say.
Morgan, thank you very much. And I will comment simply. You're invoking the social contract. I understand it.
I'd like this.
Would you like? I said you provide a copy of that for the clerk and for our attorney, Morgan.
Yes, sorry. I only have one. I ran out of paper.
That's okay. We'll copy it, and we'll give you a copy back, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could ask that a copy be made for the clerk, members of council, and for our town attorney, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Also, thank you. Also, any comments from council on that particular thing? We generally don't, but he's invoking something. Any thoughts, comments? Okay.
I'd sooner Morgan get a legal opinion.
We need a... I think we need a legal opinion on this.
Yeah.
And how quickly will you be able to provide that? Not tonight, but I mean, what would you suggest?
I don't know about the length of it. I mean, we can get back to the manager and council on that. And of course, you as mayor.
Thank you. As expeditiously as possible. Thank you. Barbara Cook. Ms. Cook. And this is a three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Cook, and I live at 264 Plantation Drive in Richlands. I was looking through the town website this afternoon, just curious. And I saw boldly across the top that the town motto, "The Center of a Friendly Circle", is very easy to see. Well, I kept looking for some more. I was looking for the town vision and/or the vision of the town council, and it might be there, but I didn't see it. So I'm asking, what is the council's vision for our town? It might be good for you, as elected or appointed council members, to ask yourself, what is my vision? What do I expect to happen in the future for the town of Richlands? What goals do you have as a council member? I know there's issues. I mean, you know, it's kind of obvious that there's some issues. But we need to have a vision. You, the citizens, need to have a vision. And what are we doing to get closer and closer to that vision, to attain that vision? What steps are being taken? And if there is a vision, I'd really like to see it. And sometimes, we need to take a step back and look at the whole picture of what's going on. Sometimes, we get too busy with the minutia that we don't see the whole picture, and we need to do that. We need to look at our town. We need to look and see where improvements may need to be made, where cuts need to be made, where things need to be changed so that we can attain our goals, a common goal, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Okay, that is all that are signed up for the three-minute unscheduled public hearing. And I'd asked previously so we can move on from this particular part of our agenda. We do appreciate all the input of the citizens and all the comment periods. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Heather, for making those. Are there enough to distribute to council?
I got...
Okay, thank you very much. We'll wait till that is distributed, and then we will go. And Roman numeral nine, Executive Close Session Pursuant to Virginia Code. I'll read that in just a minute. Thank you. Does every member of council and manager and clerk and town attorney have the copy from Morgan? And he has a copy, too. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and your passion for this town. I really do appreciate it. And speaking on behalf of the council, I know that everyone here does. Okay. Let's move on to Roman numeral nine, Executive Close Session Pursuant to Virginia Code, So we will adjourn. Shall we go into the room in here? Is anyone uncomfortable?
I make a motion that we go to Executive Close Session Pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A84, discuss 4-year-related issues.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff makes the motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? And it's clear of what we're going in for. Okay. There being no discussion. Becca, would you give a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 I would suggest that council recess into the chamber. And here, no one's meeting. Are they tonight, Tom?
I don't know if it's...
Is it clear?
It's clear.
Okay. If it is, then we'll go in there. That would give the people a place to sit. And if it isn't, we'll unfortunately have to ask the public to step out. Let's find it. Are we good? Okay, we'll recess into the room here. Thank you. Thank you.
Everyone is seated. We are back in session. I would entertain a motion to come back into session and by so moving, each person is certifying that nothing was discussed in this meeting, executive session of the council, other than 2.2-371188 for you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mike makes the motion and Seth seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? As you vote, you're certifying that nothing was discussed other than 2.2-371188 for you. Okay, Becca, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Tristan?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Seth?
Motion carries unanimously.
Members here in the, citizens in the council room, we were given this, it's chapter 37, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, right here, this is what we presented. So it is public knowledge what we were given. So we can provide a copy at your request, or we just give it to you, you don't have to request it. Fair enough? So maybe before the, it's rather lengthy, but before the evening is out, can we have some copies available, John? One, two, three, how many people want a copy of this? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, hold on, hold them up high please, so I can count. One, two, three, four, five, six copies. Thank you.
Mayor, that is online, if we want to give them the website of where to find that.
I think that's an additional thing, can you provide that?
I can.
Thank you, go ahead. We'll let the attorney provide the website as well.
It's the Virginia code, let me give you the actual.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Take your time, we're fine. We're moving along nicely.
The website is L A W dot L I S dot Virginia dot gov. And you would go to title 2.2, Administration of Government, and subtitle 2, Administration of State Government, and Chapter 37, Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And it's that whole, that whole chapter, 2.2, 37, 3700, all the way to 2.2, 3715.
Thank you very much. So those copies will be forthcoming as soon as, is Heather, are you printing them off, John? Okay, thank you. So they'll be available shortly, thank you. Okay, we are now, we have returned, we're on, we just moved past Roman numeral 10, and we're on Roman number 11. Agenda items, Electric Regulation Discussion, Alice Wolf, Blue Ridge Power, and Thomas Dick, Municipal Electric Power Association of Virginia. Okay.
Before we start, I have a letter from both of these organizations. At our last meeting, the topic of SCC regulations came up. I wasn't quite sure where to start, so I reached out to these two organizations that represent the other municipally-owned electric systems in the state of Virginia, and asked them to kind of, you give what their thoughts on it, and if it's something they support, oppose. So they've both provided a letter, and then Alice and Thomas are, you know, here, willing to kind of speak on that, and what, answer any questions you may have, and hopefully we can get some direction from council on, is this something you want to continue to pursue, or you have the information you need to decide that it's not something at this time you want to look into. So if you have any questions, or I can turn it over to Alice at this point.
One second, John. Got two stacks going on, okay. Wait a little bit to get to the handouts. John, I was, so this is, they reached out, them regarding, what was it?
The SCC.
SCC State Corporation Commission?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. Okay, can members of council see Mrs. Wolf? Okay, Mrs. Wolf, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for coming and joining us tonight. So we'll move forward. I believe John said he had contacted you regarding State Corporation Commission regulations and how it might affect us, is that correct?
Yes, my understanding was, John wanted to know what the position would be of the Blue Ridge members if Richlands were to move forward in seeking regulation of its electric rates from the SCC.
Okay. Feel free.
I can, I can share a couple of comments if you'd like. I appreciate you making the time for me to speak tonight. Just a thank you to the mayor and the members of council. For context, the members of Blue Ridge are all electric distribution utilities, just like Richlands is. Two of those members are cooperatives, so they are already regulated by the SCC. And the members of the board of Blue Ridge have a broad range of experience, including time at investor-owned utilities and as rate consultants, like the work that GDS does for Richlands. So we discussed this idea as a group, and we would be strongly opposed if Richlands were to seek SCC regulation. We are the peers most similar to the town of Richlands, so once the doors open to the SCC regulating municipal electric utilities, we are the ones who could be regulated next. With the experience among the group, we don't believe that SCC regulation will help Richlands achieve its goals. All of the Blue Ridge members want to provide reliable electric service, cover their power bills, and keep their rates low. The SCC exists, though, because Appalachian Power is a different business model than we do. As a for-profit company, AppCo's shareholders would like the company to charge its customers as much as possible. The SCC ensures that AppCo's customers are represented. The commission aims to keep AppCo financially healthy without gold-plating services or gouging customers. Richlands is in a different situation. For this upcoming fiscal year, the council has already chosen to operate at a net loss. The council is already performing the same role that the SCC would in watching out for the customer and ensuring that the utility does not collect too much money. To the current case, the SCC is expensive. One cooperative told me it can easily run a quarter of a million dollars. That would be a new expense that Richlands customers would pay. And this would be a big concern with the other Blue Ridge members. If Richlands were regulated by the SCC, and then we get pulled in as well, we don't see a benefit to our customers for any charge like that. SCC regulation is not limited only to rates. The commission can send inquiries on any topic related to the electric system. These inquiries can come at any time. It can be 50 questions, each of which requires gathering data and providing a detailed written answer, and that's very time-consuming for utility staff to respond to. I do want to take a minute and give kudos to this council for doing the hard work here, for asking questions about options, and trying to see what you can do for your customers. This is a challenging industry, and it's complex. The history of past decisions makes a big difference, and I want to give you credit for working to understand it and looking for solutions for your customers. And I want you to know that Blue Ridge has been glad to have Richlands as a member of the agency. I believe it worked well for the town, and it's worked well for the other members, so we certainly hope to continue that relationship well into the future.
Thank you.
May we ask questions?
Ms. Wolf, are you prepared to answer questions?
I will do my best.
Okay, she'll do her best.
Okay. Why should all other citizens, other than Richlands, have the protection of the SCC in the whims of raising rates or lowering them? Why should they have the protections and we don't? And we're operating, our, our rates are much higher than AEP, which is a mile away. And I guess I'm wondering, why are, why are they special and we're not, and we can't have protection?
Well, I, I would say that you operate under a different business model than AppCo's customers do. So AppCo is a for-profit company, they are there to make money on their system, they're there to earn a return on their investment and provide a return to their shareholders. That is not why Richlands was formed as a public utility. That is not why the electric cooperatives were formed as utilities. Instead, historically speaking, municipalities formed where the investor-owned utilities didn't see it profitable to install lines. So instead, the towns came together on their own and built their own systems. And because you're owned by the town, you're regulated by the town, so the town council is in a position to say, this is what works best for our community. You really don't have an incentive to collect more money than you need. That's very different from the AppCo business model.
But we do. We take off the top $700,000, and Richlands is in for the profit because it uses it to run the finance office and all the other departments. So Richlands makes more money than AEP, so it's in the same boat as AEP, it's run for a profit. So they can take the money and use it elsewhere on other projects. So that puts us in the same boat as AEP, running it for profit. And I'm just wondering, all those people, we're divided into two parts of town, Hidden Valley and Old Town Richlands. Hidden Valley enjoys the protection of the SCC, and they have much lower rates. Richlands is much higher and pays a higher percentage than AEP in rates, and that profit that it takes off the top $700,000 every year is used in the budget to finance the whole town, which, in my opinion, would be illegal if taken to court. Have you got an answer for that?
For your council members, so I believe you're referring to the shared salaries and the money that is collected in the electric rates and is used to pay for things like a part of the town manager's salary or a part of the finance officer's salary. That is a standard accounting practice for municipal utilities, and the reason that's done is to prevent subsidization, so that the, the electric system customers are paying their fair share of the town manager's salary and the finance officer's salary. It's actually preventing the town as a whole from subsidizing the electric system or vice versa. So it's making sure that all the customers are paying a fair share of those costs.
If, if you look at it, $700,000 is a rather large amount for shared expenses. And if you look back on, one of the videos of, one of the meetings, the town manager made the statement that, and I can show it to you if you'd like, that if our budget runs short, well, we'll just take it out of the electric fund. That's how it's used. If our budget runs short, the electric fund is used as a piggy bank. And when you use it as a piggy bank for part of the town, and the other half doesn't have to pay it, I don't think that's very fair for the whole town.
Well, sir, I'm, I'm gonna have to say, I'd have to defer to John O'Daniel on that. I don't deal with the matters of how the town deals with its costs. Really, the, the area I'm looking at typically for Blue Ridge is on the wholesale side of things, so your energy bills, your capacity, your transmission bills, it's a pretty significant portion of your overall bills, and it's different from the town's costs that it has to manage.
I agree with you, if it is, if it is ran properly, it could be an asset to the town, and we could have cheaper rates than AEP if it's managed properly. But in my opinion, and it's my opinion, Richlands is mismanaged, and the only way that we can cure that is to have the SCC look into it and protect the citizens from the higher rates that we're having to pay as compared to AEP. But I agree with your overall scenario, but it doesn't work for Richlands because we, in my opinion, the whole system is mismanaged.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Alice, I have a question for you. So you represent this Blue Ridge Power Agency, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And out of this group of towns and localities that I see here, do all of these have power generation abilities, or are some just transmission-only like Richlands?
That's a great question, and, I'm looking for my fact sheet. So let me answer that question in a broad sense. Across the US, there are about 2,000 public power utilities. The vast majority of them are very similar to Richlands. So similar in terms of size, the number of customers that they serve, similar in having large amounts of residential customers, so not significant industry or significantly commercial, but highly residential, and comparable in that they do not have generation. So that's across the entire country. The vast majority of public power communities do not own generation, do not have generation that's sitting on their lines. In terms of Blue Ridge, we actually do have several members that own generation, and I would say it's almost unique within public power as a whole because there are so many members that do have generation. And I don't have it memorized, so I'm gonna pull up a fact sheet real quick, but does that kind of answer the gist of your question?
Well, yes and no, but I just, I'm curious in Virginia, because I'm under the understanding that most of the folks in this group do have power generation.
So, so I pull up my fact sheet. So for the Blue Ridge members, most of the communities do have some type of generation. What's important to understand about that is that this generation that they have does not supply all of their power needs, supplies a really pretty small portion of their power needs. So for instance, the city of Martinsville has a hydro facility on town. I think that hydro facility is maybe 1 megawatt. And they, they have a landfill gas and a unit that sometimes runs on natural gas, and that's about another 1.3 megawatts. Their total needs are significantly greater than that.
Right.
So the total amount of generation that they're producing in town, I'm gonna guess it's maybe 5% of their total needs. It, it's an important part of their power supply, they love having it, but the vast majority of their power supply is coming from outside of the town, it's coming in over the wires. And that's the case for the majority of the Blue Ridge members. The town of Bedford is actually kind of different in this regard. They have two, at least two different hydro facilities, some diesel generation and some solar. They've really gone the route of trying to have a lot of generation attached to their distribution lines, but they're unusual in that regard. And, and most of the Blue Ridge members, if they're generating power, it's really a pretty small part of their overall portfolio.
So, question, out of this group, is there anyone other than Richlands that has zero generation? Maybe if I rephrase it that way.
Yeah. Creighton Electric Cooperative does not have any generation. I mean, honestly, the amount of generation that the city of Salem has is, it's really tiny, they use it as a peaking unit, so it's, it's really small amount. And I think, you know, if you were to look at the broader population of public power communities, you would see that most of them don't have any generation.
I think that, and I under, you know, this, this SCC issue came up before I was on this council, but I think we have a, we have a broader issue in that, you know, we are trying to offer a commodity power at a, at a comparable price to American Electric, or Appalachian Power, or whatever you want to call it. So our goal, you know, is not to make a profit, you know, to operate, and, and I can understand all that, and I appreciate that. But the issue is, we're now offering a commodity at a greater price than what American Electric or Appalachian Power is offering that. And I think that our issue is not an SCC issue, in my opinion, again, I know you all had all this going before I got here, this is my opinion. But our issue is, you know, we need to look at, how do we either, how, what do we, what can we do to get our power rates to where they at least match AEP? And, and I think, just like you said, the reason that these systems were formed was because the, the giants, back in the day, they wouldn't come in and build the lines, was because the giants back in the day, they wouldn't come in and build the lines, and everybody wanted to get power to their towns and cities and all that. And now the issue is, you know, you just have to get to this place where, why are we doing what we're doing? Someone asked in here earlier about, what's the vision of this town? Well, you know, my vision for this town is certainly not that we do something that costs our citizens more. And I think that's not, that's not why this was all set up. Now, granted, if there was no other way to get power here, and it costs us more to do that, that's a whole different discussion. But that's not the issue. The issue is, we're in a situation where we are paying more for power because we live in the town of Richlands. And that's, I think that's a separate, I don't think it has anything to do with this SCC issue, but that's an issue that we need to solve. And, you know, we're working on that. We've got some ideas. We need to at least explore that. How do we do it? Is it through generating our own power, or is it through divesting our power, you know, to AEP? This is their territory. They have the right to, they would be the person that we would do that with.
Seth, could I interject, and then I'll let you go on, if I may say this?
Go ahead, Doug, and then we'll let Ms. Wolf respond.
Richlands is even more complex than any other community in Virginia in that most systems give the whole town power. Okay, we're split into two. Half the town is on the system which pays a higher price. Hidden Valley is on AEP, and it pays a lower price. So it's even more complex than any community in Virginia. Now, you can, I'm sorry.
No, and I understand what Doug's saying, and I mean, that is a vital point, is that you have a large group of citizens that are under AEP, and they're paying the AEP rate. You have the other group of citizens who are under the town's system. Now they're paying a higher rate. And the entire town, they're subsidizing services for the entire town, which includes people who are not paying to subsidize that service. I think that's what Doug's trying to say in summation, but.
By the way, I live in Hidden Valley, so I'm one of those people that's getting subsidized.
Doug, thank you. Ms. Wolf, do you have any comment or thoughts here to share with them?
Yes, in response to Seth's comments. I mean, I think you're on the right track in terms of looking at what things you can do overall to reduce your costs and try to, you know, get as competitive as you can in comparison to Appalachian. I think that is a real political challenge, that you have a part of your town served by Apco and a part served by the town, and that the rates are different. And that's part of where, you know, Blue Ridge can help. That's what we would focus on, is those wholesale costs and how we can look for opportunities to reduce them. That's why the town council had gotten into the utility-scale battery storage RFP last fall. So that's something we're looking at, currently working on what would the cost be if you were to install a large battery in town, and you could use that for peak shaping, and that would help lower the transmission bill. So we'll be looking for other opportunities like that. I do think there are some more out there. I think the council can also look at opportunities to help the citizens in how they might manage their own power bills. We can talk about, you know, empowering citizens through energy efficiency measures. So I think there are options out there to work on these things.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I really appreciate you attending our meeting, by the way, and being available for questions. The other thing, one thing that I just wanted to state was that, you know, it is mainly, this is mainly a residential issue, but it does affect businesses as well. And, you know, if you have a, like, for instance, I have a business. I have one center here in Richlands. I have one located in the county. There is no comparison between the cost that I'm able to get from AEP and the cost that I'm offered to from the town. And that, I think, puts us at a disadvantage inside the town. If you have a heavy power user, you have someone that needs a lot of power, they can make a contract with AEP, a long-term power agreement. You know, I know that would be dangerous for the town. The town can't enter into a five-year power agreement with me like AEP can in my other business. But it does put you at a disadvantage inside the town. And, you know, that's just another thing. Do you see that? And I'm sure you understand that. Is that an issue in other places too? You become at a competitive disadvantage inside the town compared to inside, you know, in an area in the county where they're under AEP.
It is a challenge, yeah. No, you're right. It is a challenge, and it's something that I think utility managers and city councils watch very closely to see, are we going to be competitive? What are the local rates going to be? And, yeah, so I don't, I can't say I have an easy solution for you, but I think it's good that you've got your eye on the ball, and that's something that you would want to address with the council and look for those opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
We actually had Thomas as well on to discuss the same topic. If he has anything to add. He represents a separate organization that we're a part of that, similar to Blue Ridge, but represents a different set of municipalities in the second letter.
Thank you very much. So, we have Thomas Dick of the Municipal Electric Power Association of Virginia. Thomas, are you with us?
Yes, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yes, I have been listening, and I'm thankful to have come after Alice because she does such a great job of responding to questions. And most of the things that I would have responded to, she has handled, I think, quite well. I just would say, you know, we have, the Municipal Electric Power Association of Virginia, we have 16 members, seven towns, seven cities, one authority and one state agency that operates their own electric utility. And the ones, we have seven of them are members by their power from Dominion. So they have a wholesale power contract with Dominion. And they have, you know, very little generation of their own. And I would say that, you know, 95% at least of their power is purchased power from Dominion. And in terms of regulation, those contracts are regulated by, at the federal level, the federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So that's not subject, you know, to SCC jurisdiction. And since, you know, that, most of the cost of our utilities, you know, the cost of power is the biggest factor for a municipal utility in setting rates. That's a big part that really is outside the scope of what, you know, the commission could be involved in. But I want to say, I've worked for, I've had the fortune to work for municipal electric utilities for 25 years. And the number-one legislative priority, my marching words have always been, you know, we don't want any regulation by the state corporation commission. And a lot of that has been historically, you know, the local government, local elected officials can be very responsive to local concerns. And we think it's even, it's more effective, more responsive than having to hop in a car and drive to Richmond to deal with a state agency on an issue. We think it's, you know, once you have people who are elected and represent the citizens, and, you know, they're accountable, you got the bottom box to people. And, you know, that's the way, you have that kind of accountability there. So, we have made the case that it's, whenever the issue has come up legislatively, and it has over the years. And in 2015, there were some issues, and Danville was having some industrial rate issues. And Danville was, you know, ultimately worked out those issues with American Municipal Power to work out some things that addressed issues from their large industrial customers very effectively. But there was a legislative body, a commission on electric utility regulation. And they were asked to look at whether or not there should be regulation of municipalities. And they, at the end of the day, they decided not to make any recommendations for any kind of legislation. And we argued too that there are constitutional issues there as well. And that's something that, you know, we argued to that commission, and Danville and Baco have maintained. And it's not just for us, but for other government-owned utilities, whether they're water, sewer, or natural gas. And we think that the best regulation is locally. And we don't think under the state's constitution that, you know, there's authority for the commission to, even if the General Assembly Act is up in it, we think it would be unconstitutional. But there are problems we see with SCC regulation because it's an additional layer. And Alice talked about, you know, the enormous cost of that. And as I said, a lot of that cost is not, would be directly subject to SCC jurisdiction because it's regulated at the federal level. And even if, you know, if there was SCC regulation, the municipality would have to, you'd have to act and submit, file a rate case with, you know, the commission. So you would be involved in putting something together and sending, you know, for approval. You'd be on the record to do that, and that process is quite expensive. But SCC regulation, you know, comes in a number of forms, and it really eliminates your flexibility to do a number of things. It is, you know, local governments are always concerned about the Dillon Law. SCC regulations like the Dillon Law on steroids, because you have to, you know, get permission for things, and you have to do a lot of regulatory reporting and filings with the commission on all sorts of things. And so, those kind of operational costs add to cost up. And Alice has covered that, you know, quite well, so I won't beat that to death. But, you know, I know there are difficult situations there with rates. I mean, we think that, you know, the Clean Economy Act, that Dominion just saw it with the commission, that they're gonna have to raise their fuel costs another $9 a month for residential customers. Apco's got, you know, is filing to raise rates as well. All those rates are going up. And so the other utilities, not just in Virginia, but throughout the country, are seeing increased energy costs. You know, those costs are going up, and that's unfortunate. That's sort of the world that we live in. But, you know, I'm glad to try to respond to any questions. I want to point out one thing. We talk about flexibility. The city of Manassas had their largest industrial customer was Micron, which makes these, into their computer chips. And Micron, you know, was shopping around for the cheapest rate they could get because they, you know, they operate on this margin, so this thing adds up very quickly. And so, what Manassas did, they negotiated, actually with Dominion, to allow, because Dominion has one of the best industrial rates east of the Mississippi, to have Dominion provide service to Micron. So, you know, they kept the service territory, but they operated a franchise agreement for them, for that large, for that one utility customer, because that customer employed 1,500 people there. But no other, no co-op would do that, would go to the lengths that City of Manassas did to try to make sure that that one large employer in the region was able to, you know, to stay there because there'd been so many jobs and tax revenue for the local county. They did that, and nobody, you know, the co-op wouldn't do something like that. And none of the investor utilities would do something like that. You, you know, there is, I'm not suggesting that you don't do that, but I'm just pointing out that, you know, you have flexibility to address things differently than other utilities because you don't have to go to the state corporation commission for approval.
Mr. Dick, thank you first off. On behalf of the council, myself, I want to thank you personally for coming in.
May I make a statement, please?
In to our meeting tonight and addressing as many issues as you can. So you're with the Municipal Electric Power Association of Virginia. I just don't know. How many meetings do you have with us, I mean, regularly? Do you, I don't know.
I'm sorry, could you?
Sure.
Wasn't quite clear.
That's all right. Do you meet with us regularly, such as our manager? Do you meet with us regularly?
Well, I try to meet with, you know, the group. We have a meeting of our board of directors later this month.
Okay.
And so, you know, that, our board meets on a quarterly basis, and I try to stay in contact and some contact with the utility people throughout our systems on various issues throughout the year. And so, I'm available, you know, I sort of would want to be helpful to you all in any way that I can, short of, I mean, this is an issue, SCC regulation. It's something that our organization, you know, I know what it brings. But, you know, there may be other things that we can, you know, anything that we can help you on, short of that.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious, and I appreciate that. I believe Councilman Ratliff has a question.
I don't, oh, thank you. I don't think the citizens would object at all if our rates equaled Apco. There would be no problem. I mean, they would love that. But I think unless the town moves to manage the system better and to make it equal to Apco, there will be a movement either to sell the system or to get regulation. Because it's not fair to the citizens to have to pay a higher price than part of the other town.
I'm not sure what, all of the details of everything certainly that's happened in Richlands, but I know in other localities, like in Danville in particular, they have a very good record of getting, keeping the power on. There are, if you compare their outages to Apco or to Dominion, and many of our, I would say, most of our municipal utilities do a much better job of keeping the power back on. And so there is a bit of a, I'd say the quality of power and the continuation of service, you might pay a little bit more to get that. So I think that's something that you won't think about.
I don't have a problem. I'm on AEP in Hidden Valley. I don't have a problem with them keeping the power on. I have no problem at all. And I'm sure most, all of Hidden Valley doesn't have a problem. I mean, that's easy to say and to make the excuse to pay more for service. But in my, in the history of Hidden Valley, we don't lose power very much. And, you know, we've got citizens, some of the average power bills are like $800, $1,000. We had one person $1,900 a month. And while in Claypole Hill, they're paying $300 and some, $400, seems like our bills in Old Town are double what our neighbors are. And I can assure you, the citizens are not going to stand for that very long. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dick or statements? Thomas, thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to the members, the council mayor, the members of the council for giving us the opportunity to listen in and try to give whatever advice that we can. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be with us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you, Doug. Okay, next, the Roman numeral 11. B, discussion of proposal.
Mayor, before we move on, could I get some direction on this? At this point, we've had two organizations that represent numerous other municipalities that said they were going to oppose this. Is this something you still want us to reach out to our representatives and see if there's something there interested in picking up? Or is it something?
For having SCC regulation?
Yes, there is something the council, you know, with information is.
May I ask a question?
Of whom?
Town manager.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to ask this question. On your shared expense, you say that you spend 29% of your time in the electric system. On shared expense, per day. Okay, that's approximately two and a half hours a day of your workday. Okay, what do you do for the power system in that two and a half hours?
That was an assessment or a study that was done before. I haven't ever sat down and assessed my own day-to-day.
I mean, that's what you gave us.
Yeah, that's the percentages that we've been using based on, you know, what.
Prior to your campaign.
Yeah, historically, they.
Well, if you know, okay, if you know it's not true, why do you hand out?
I don't know that it's not true. I haven't.
Do you spend two and a half hours of your day on the electric system?
I don't know. I'd have to sit down and, you know.
I mean, I would know if I spent two and a half hours on something a day.
Depends on the day.
What do you, what do you do for the power system each day?
I mean, it just depends.
Well, I mean, give us some examples.
And we have meetings, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's.
Do you have a meeting every day on electric?
May I interject something, please? Your questions are valid, but I think they would be better addressed either in executive session, it seems like to me. I don't know how the members of council feel. If it's an employee issue.
If it's not, I mean, this was given as public knowledge. It was given as an excuse of why they're taking out $700,000 every year from the power system. Okay, I'm just, for the public, I'm asking, what do you do two and a half hours? Okay, I'm just, for the public, I'm asking, what do you do two and a half hours for the electric system? I mean, to me, I would know I spent that much time on an issue. And I'm just, I don't understand, you know. I would just like to know, what do you do? I mean, if, if somebody has a, and I'll put this out to everybody, to the public, I hope if someone has, since you've got two and a half hours to spend on the electric system, I hope everybody that calls in and wants to see you about their electric bill, would you see them? Personally and talk to them, since you've got two and a half hours a day to spend on the electric system. I mean, can they come and see you?
Our office is always open.
And you will see them?
If I'm available.
Okay. I invite all those people that's having a problem with their power being so high that they come and see our town manager, John O'Daniels, and talk it over and see if he can help you out. Thank you.
Are we at a point where we can, thank you for your question? Okay, so to keep my place here, we are on Roman numeral 11, item B, discussion of proposed solar study in ordinance.
We're still on A. I need direction on the SCC.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot it. I got lost track, and I want to apologize. I'm sorry, John.
You're in.
Okay, we are talking about, do we want to move forward with considering being part of the State Corporation Commission? A general consensus of the council.
Before anybody speaks, could I say one thing?
One thing. I mean, we should explore every avenue to help our electric rates. If, if the town can't manage to make our rates equal to AEP, then there's nothing that we shouldn't explore to try to solve the problems, to help the citizens. We had 80 people cut off the power system. We should have had in that time period maybe three or four. When you have 80 people that's cut off, have no heat, no light, no power, I think you have a real problem, and I think you owe it to the citizens to explore every avenue.
Thank you, Doug. All right, so consensus, is there any further comment from members of council, further comment on our pursuing State Corporation Commission, being a part of it?
Looks like from these letters, they made their position fairly clear. Yeah, I read this.
I mean, that's like the wolf guarding.
Just a minute, please, Doug. Actually, you've made some good points, and I think you've got it.
Could I say one more thing, you know?
No, just a minute, please. Let's give other people a chance to have a floor. It's the right thing.
May I speak after everybody?
Maybe. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate them coming to speak to us again. I don't think the issue, this is me personally, I don't think the issue is an SCC issue. I feel like the issue is deeper, and I understand what Doug's saying, because half our towns are not half, but a large percentage of our town is regulated by SCC and parts are not. But I, I understand from listening to them today, I think our greatest regulation comes from right here, from this board, and that.
That's what I'm gathering.
We are given the power to regulate. You know, my opinion is, we shouldn't charge a higher rate than AEP, and that's why I'm trying to, the time that I spend on this board is, I want to save money, whatever way that we need to do that, cut costs, whatever that, whatever that looks like. Because if we can't operate an electrical system at a equal amount or a less amount than AEP can charge people, we are no longer fit to operate an electrical system.
And what I gather is the State Corporation Commission can regulate, but apparently, as I'm understanding it, and I hope you are listening, Thomas and Alice, as I understand it, the regulations of State Corporation Commission, if we approach them, I may say there's a lot more detail involved, whereas here on our council, our council has the responsibility to control, regulate our utility rates, and that comes down to our responsibility. What I'm going, and I may be wrong, is that the council, a smaller group that regulates itself, has the ability to work much more quickly and efficiently than working through the State Corporation Commission. I won't ask you for agreement or disagreement, that's just my understanding. Now, but Doug, I don't know if you want to say something, and you will have that opportunity, but not yet. Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Doug. Is any of the member of council who would like to speak on this issue, so that John can have direction?
You know, I agree with Seth. I think, you know, we ought to be able to match AEP. AEP is getting ready to do some rate increases, so, you know, how much higher is the town going to be than AEP soon? But I think that, that's something the council always needs to do, is try to stay as close to, with AEP as they can.
Okay. Thank you, Darryl. Anyone else on council that wishes to speak on the issue of trying to go with the State Corporation Commission? Doug, your last statement, please.
Okay. With all due respect to Blue Ridge, it's like the wolf guarding the hen house. They don't want, of course, they're going to say, Jeff, we don't want this. They don't want regulated. They want full control. So, God forgive, forgive me, they would never say, hey, we want to be regulated, because they don't want anyone looking over the shoulder, just as this council doesn't. But when the council proves theirself unfit and mismanages a system like ours, then they either correct it or they need to be regulated.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, so I will ask for a consensus of council, move forward or not, just a consensus. Jeff?
Would it be okay for a vote, just?
If we can, I will ask for a motion, one way or the other. A motion to pursue regulation with SCC, SCC. Is there a motion to pursue regulation by the State Corporation Commission?
I'll make a motion that we at least explore every avenue. We don't necessarily have to go with the SCC, but why not look into every avenue to bring our citizens at least equal to AEP rates?
Doug, I appreciate the motion. Does that give him, does your motion give him direction about the SCC?
Yes.
It does?
I said, explore all avenues. I'll make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to explore all avenues as direction to the manager for SCC. That is what you're seeking. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There is no second. The motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion to not pursue regulation by the State Corporation Commission?
I don't think you need a motion to not pursue.
What would you like to hear? Make it your way.
I'm just saying that, you know, I'm not against what Doug's saying, is that we pursue all avenues. I think we're all on the same page, but I just don't think, this is my opinion, that this is not, I understand what they're saying, and this is not the way we do it. We have to do that right here with citizens, you know, we take votes every November. This is our opportunity, you know. When I agreed to serve on this council, when I spoke to several different, different members that talked to me, you know, they can all, they will all tell you, this was the number one thing that I, I said, look, if you put me on council, I'm going to come and we're going to explore this. And I think that's why we're setting up this conversation with AEP, with every other, you know, avenue that we can. I've talked to people this week, wanted to talk about power generation, whatever, whatever the avenue is, I don't know what the answer is. But, you know, I think the goal, I think we all have the same goal, and that is, we do need to have the same or a lower rate than AEP. That's very simple. If we want to operate a power system, that's what we, that should be our goal. But I just don't think, you know, I don't want to support us pursuing a CC thing, but if Doug's motion died for like a second, I don't think you need a motion saying, don't do this.
Okay. It does, and I think that's prudent.
It's double negative, I don't think.
So, well, here's my question. Do you feel you have direction?
Yeah, I do. I just, we'll make sure we're clear that, you know, we're putting this, so we can focus on, you know, the other avenues. I don't want to keep backtracking to the same, you know, if it's something we don't want to do, I want us to be very clear in that that's the decision that's been made, and now we can focus on, you know, the other avenues.
Other ways to do our own self-regulation.
May I say something? Cool it, Mayor.
No, I'm trying to hear you over and over again.
Okay.
And just a minute, please. And I'm trying to say, I've got your point. Does anyone not have Doug's point?
This is a different point.
Just a minute, please.
This is a different point.
Just a minute, please.
I have the right as council to speak.
You may speak.
If we could put a time limit on the study that you do, if we don't have, let's have, I ask that the council have a plan within two months, how to get our rates down to AEP. If we don't set a time limit like two months, this will drag on for years and nothing will ever be done. All I'm asking is the council set a, ask Mr. O'Daniels to have a plan to get us equal with AEP within two months. That's 60 days, and that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. You have a direction? Let's move forward, please.
Could we have a consensus with the council on the two months, or we're just going past by?
Is there a consensus for a two-month time limit?
No.
We have our first meeting, AEP tomorrow. I think I'll have a better understanding of what is available, you know, what we can do. We meet again on the 24th.
Correct. Okay. That's right.
I think, I think I can speak to that more.
Effectively.
Yes, after that meeting, and to give, to put a period and a deadline on it. Now, we all have the same goal, but I don't know to say, can that realistically be done? Is this where we're going?
In two months?
Right. I don't know that. But I think I'll have a better understanding of where we are at.
Okay, let me ask you directly, Seth, consensus or not for two months?
I mean, I would rather just.
Consensus or not, Seth?
I don't, I don't know that I could give you a consensus.
Well, then we can't do it, too.
As quickly as possible.
Yours, consensus or not?
I agree, I agree. I don't think we're doing it two months.
Chris?
No.
Consensus or not for two months?
I agree with Seth. We need to wait until after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. There is no consensus, Doug.
And one other thing, Seth, you know, when you're talking about that, I think we need to, we need to be cautious as to how we approach this, and we don't need to be exclusively dealing with one company.
Oh, we, that's okay. We can be exclusive. That's their territory. This is the only company you can deal with.
But we don't have to request a bid from other outside entities as a public, as a public utility?
We operate as a, we operate as a public utility, as a provision inside the state's areas.
So if Jeff Hurst Electrical Company, I couldn't buy it. Okay.
AEP is granted a territory, you exist inside of AEP's territory because of a special provision in the state of.
But can any other companies buy us?
No, they cannot. We can't sell to Dominion.
That's what I was asking.
This is AEP's territory. So it is proper, and I vetted this with legal counsel today.
Yeah.
Not our legal counsel, my legal counsel.
Yeah.
And it is proper to have all the conversations and communications we want to, because they are the only entity that we could.
Okay. I don't know if we had to request bids or not. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
I appreciate your input, and everyone's input. It makes a difference, and I hope that we can be as concise as possible. Are we ready?
Will we have any copies of those letters?
We'll provide, here, you can have mine.
They're right there. Their extras are.
Oh, their extras right there.
Yeah.
Seth, will you please get those to us, and anybody else who wants them? Thank you. All right, now, are we ready now to move on to item B under Roman numeral 11? Members of council?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So here we go. Discussion of proposed solar study in ordinance. Alice Wolf, Ms. Wolf, would you please join us?
She's here.
I'm late. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear us?
I can, yes.
What's your temperature like in your room?
Great. Great. So.
I hear it.
As you mentioned, we discussed by those over GDS to help.
Ms., ma, I'm sorry, ma'am. I was being humorous, and it wasn't very humorous. I'm very sorry. Please continue. I could not hear you for the laughter.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not quite hearing everything that's going.
That's okay. It's good you didn't.
Sorry, that's not. So, yes, GDS provided a proposal to help Richland with the solar rate and with interconnection procedures. So the total cost for this work is estimated at $11,000, and there's two components to that proposal. $5,000 of that is to help develop a solar rate. So right now, Richland is charging customers, a customer charge, and then a cent per kilowatt hour.
Ms., Ms. Wolf, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Can you hear me, ma'am? We've had someone leave. Let's wait till they return to council. I'm very sorry. Can you hold, please?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's, you didn't know that. I want everybody to be privy to what you're saying. Thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem at all.
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. We have some people who need to be excused to the ladies' room and the men's room. Thank you. Pardon, pardon at your time. Thank you, ma'am. Five minutes. Rest room? Okay. Okay. Council's back in session. Thank you. We are now going to discuss proposed solar study and ordinance. Ms. Wolf, thank you for being with us. It's much better. Thank you. Would you mind to pursue this discussion?
Certainly.
I can't hear you. Very sorry. Is your microphone on?
It was on.
There we go.
That's okay.
How's that?
It's just a hiccup. You're fine.
Okay. Okay, so John had asked me to discuss a proposal from GDS to help Richlands develop a solar rate and interconnection procedures. Total cost of this work is estimated at $11,000, and that's split into two pieces. The first piece of that is $5,000, and that's to help develop the solar rate itself. So right now, Richlands is charging customers on a cents per kilowatt hour. With solar, customers would be generating energy, so you will give them, either credit them or pay them for the energy that they're generating. The amount that they're going to be paid is probably really critical to those solar customers. It might sound like a simple decision, but it has to do with the complexities of accounting. You're charging a variable rate, and some of your fixed costs are in that variable rate, so it's important to ensure that you're going to continue to collect enough money to cover your fixed costs. Over the last few years, the electric industry has moved to ensure fairness across customers, in particular with solar rates. So it's often that more affluent customers are choosing to install solar, and you want to ensure you're still collecting enough from them to cover their cost of using the system. If you didn't, then you would have the less affluent customers subsidizing the solar customers. Some rates are considered more solar-friendly than others, some are less so. So those are the types of things that the council wants to be thinking about, and that's what that $5,000 to GDS would help you work through that analysis and develop what that rate should be. The remaining $6,000 is to develop interconnection procedures and documents. Right now, your customers are connected to your electrical grid, and they're all using energy, but again, with solar, they're going to be producing their own energy that's coming back into your grid. So it's a two-way flow of energy instead of just a one-way flow. One of the most important things is to make sure that their solar system would shut off when the rest of the system does. Otherwise, you could have line workers working on the system, and if the solar produces some energy, the line workers could be hurt. So you want to make sure that that's one of the things that's addressed in these interconnection procedures. These are pretty hefty documents. They often run between 60 and 70 pages worth, worth of materials, and they address the technical requirements, safety, the application forms, the types of fees the town will collect, how long the town has to review applications, how to make sure that other customers on your system are protected. So that's all the type of thing that goes into the document. I would say most customers who are considering solar are probably thinking about relatively small rooftop solar system. Those are typically under 10 kilowatts in size. So of a 70-page document, it's only a small subset of that that would address the small solar systems. There are still important technical and safety requirements for small solar, but typically those don't require nearly as much review and study as a larger generation facility would. But the procedures would address the billing policies for those small solar customers. So it is timely to do the work together at the same time that you're looking at the solar rate. So again, that's a total estimate of $11,000. $5,000 of that is to develop the solar rate, and then the remaining $6,000 is to develop the interconnection procedures and documents for that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure members of council have thoughts, questions, statements, anyone? Mike, did you want to say something about solar? Maybe I lost. Seth, understand?
No, no, I'm fine. I've done some research on solar. I think she knows that, but I think I'm good on her, on her proposal. Good.
Any other questions from Ms. Wolf?
I'll just state that, you know, we have had a couple people that have stated they were interested in the potential of putting solar panels on their house or on their property. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, if this is something that the council is going to allow, that we go ahead and get a policy in place, so when they look at spending this, you know, thousands of dollars on these panels, that they don't think that they're going to be able to sell electricity back at, you know, our retail rate, when, you know, we either don't allow it or it's a different rate. We'd rather make sure they know and have all the information in the regulations of what our expectations are before they make that leap to add solar panels. So if it's something that council is interested in allowing, I think this is the route we go. If it's something that you think that this time we just don't want to allow it, you know, then, you know, we won't do it. But I think it's, you know, kind of where we are on this topic, and I'll leave it up to council to kind of give direction.
Okay. Thoughts, questions about solar power?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Did you all do an RFP for this study?
I'm not aware of an RFP.
I mean, why would you not do a request for proposal for a, if you're going to do this, I think that you can't, I mean, unless I misunderstood, is there just a way that you can just arbitrarily pick someone to do?
If I had an answer, I'd defer to John on that.
I would think it's part of professional services and doing it through Blue Ridge. There's set cost savings because other organizations are having the same study done, so we're joining in with theirs.
I mean, I just think we might be...
I don't know. Alice, did y'all do an RFP before y'all selected GDS or...
Honestly, Blue Ridge has been working with GDS for a long time, since back before I joined Blue Ridge in 2016. So there's been a long history there of working with GDS. So if there was one conducted, it was quite a while ago. There was an RFP conducted, so let me back up. I understand there was an RFP conducted to work on rate studies, and GDS won that. I'm not sure when that RFP was conducted. But typically, the members work through GDS because there's economies of scale in working with the other organizations. So there are other Blue Ridge members who are looking at these type of rates and looking at these procedures right now. So you do get the benefits of getting, you know, some discounted pricing because you're working with other organizations.
What's a cap for, well, what's a cap for professional services that you don't have to do an RFP for?
John?
I don't know if it's on my head. I'll, I can look into it and...
Cap for professional services for which we do not, for which RFP is not required?
Because, yeah, I'm not saying that the, I'm not trying to say this is bad or anything like that. I'm just saying there's a way you do business, there's a way you do things. We're talking about request for proposals. If you're going to pay $11,000 for a study or whatever that is, that...
We have had, I don't remember if there is a figure, but I don't know what it is.
We can have legal look into and get a...
Yeah, I just...
If it's something council wants to pursue, we'll have legal double check, make sure there's no...
I just don't want to do something that's, you know, we need to make sure we're following all the rules, and the rules that we got to do that. And also, if, if I may, while we're on that, and this is something, and we can put this on the next agenda, I'd like to talk about, or I was going to mention it in my minute, or my discussion later, but one of the things that I like to do is, or I like to look at our, our, our policy on requesting bids and proposals. I'd like to go over that and maybe make some modifications, some things that we did at the county that I feel like are good for that. And one of those is electronic, using Electronic Virginia. When we changed our procurement policy, one of the mandates was that we had to put the bid on elec, not only do you advertise in a local paper, but you put it on Electronic Virginia. And we found out after we did that, the proposals that we got, we started getting, we started saving money on everything, because you open that up to anyone in the state who's on Electronic Virginia, and you start getting these bids from different places, and it really can save a lot of money on things.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah, that's just something I wanted to mention. If we can look at that, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I just think that, just make sure that we're following all the rules.
So Seth, are you suggesting that we make sure we're following RFP guidelines before we move forward with an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Or a study. This is for the study. Correct. Yeah.
This is study and ordinance on the...
But, you know, I think we go ahead and be looking at the ordinance and the, and, you know, I think it's something, you know, when you move forward with...
I think we need to allow it. If people wanted, yeah, I agree with that.
We need to allow it.
Okay.
That's what we're... We could buy power cheaper, you know, from people, solar panels, because I know some people's got bigger buildings in town that, that, you know, would do this.
Could benefit from that.
Yeah. And the town, I know one building, one building in town is, is a big building, and they've gone, they're going to have nothing but tenants in it. So probably the route they'll go, instead of, a lot of people will use the power from the solar. But this one, this one group will probably lease the top of their building to a solar panel company and sell all the power to the town. And the, the solar panel people just be like a regular tenant to them. So, you know, I, I think we need to pursue ordinance as we, you know, pursue, you know...
I think you get into questions about, like, what she was talking about, you know, what rate are you going to pay for that? And that's different all over the country. Some states are more amenable to it, some aren't. You know, there's a lot of, some people get basically whatever the cost is, they pay them, you know, or like, some, yeah, some of them will let you, you know, they'll let you go total net zero cost. Some of them will buy the, there's a lot, and I know that's what she's talking about through this. We just had to figure out what that is.
That was my, that was my next question.
Yeah.
To her. At what point, in your proposal, could you give two proposals? One, that we charge what it really costs, and the other one, of course, what our rates Do you understand? What, what the power really costs from Blue Ridge? And then a proposal with what our rates are? I guess what I'm getting at, if citizens go to put the panels on their house, I wouldn't want them to be overcharged, and I would like two proposals. One for what it really costs, and of course, what the rate is.
I, I think their intent is to give us a couple options and come in and discuss them with council and explain what each of them means. I don't know what exactly, what exact numbers they'll come up with, but I'm sure they'll have, you know, a couple that will be up to council to decide, you know, which ones that you want to, you put in place.
I have a question. John, on the, on the agenda, since discussion proposed solar study and ordinance?
Yes.
Are we, I don't disagree we needed ordinance, but are we ready to provide an ordinance?
Well, it's, it's part of their study. It's two parts, and part of it's the study for the rate, and part of it's the, the ordinance that would put all the regulations and the stipulations and everything in place.
Is that in here?
That's what the breakdown was.
We would pay them, they would make it.
Okay.
So we don't have a copy of the ordinance.
5,000, 5,000 of it was to study the actual rate, and then the other six were the, sort of the procedure.
To draft the ordinance.
Okay, I got you. All right, so further discussion. Thank you for helping. I appreciate that.
For me, as long as it's, you know, Seth, good point, and as long as it's below the profession, the, whatever that threshold is.
Yeah, we'll make sure procurement, regulations are followed.
I don't think we hold it up. If, I have zero issues holding it up, you know, if it's, if it's within that.
I would like a vote since, you know, you're essentially approving the spending of new funds.
Okay. So you want a motion to move forward?
I would like a vote.
Okay. I'll just take it straight from the way it's listed on the agenda. Is there a motion to pursue solar study and ordinance? Is that a proper motion?
Do we, do we need to add if it doesn't exceed the amount?
No, I, I just want with, like, I'm not going to do something that's not legal. I'll bring it back to you.
Well, but, I mean, we're voting on it. We're telling you to go do it.
Yeah, I mean, you can put that stipulation in there if you want.
Yeah, put that subject to, subject to legal approval and underneath the RFP guidelines.
All right. So is there a motion to pursue a stellar study and ordinance with the provision that does not exceed the proposed amount, was $11,000 total, is that it?
Yeah.
And that it is within the guidelines of RFP got laws, request proposal? That's probably long-winded, and I'm sorry. I'll try to find a better way to say that, but do you follow what I'm suggesting the motion be?
I'll make that motion.
Is there, all right, you make the motion. Is it be clear that, I probably didn't make that as clear as I should.
You did.
But are you clear on what I was trying to do?
It's clear.
Yes.
Yep, you did good.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you get that? Okay, is there a second? Mike made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Darrell makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion pursuant, to study, move forward with solar power and an ordinance with provisions that were within the guidelines of the RFP guidelines and that we do not exceed the proposed amount?
Oh, I do have a question.
Yes.
Alice, if, if all works out here, is there a timeline for having that ordinance and study?
I think it can be completed relatively quickly. I'd have to touch base with GDS just to, to make sure we can fit into their schedule, but I think within two to three months, you could have the completed materials. The, the interconnection procedures, I mentioned, that's a pretty hefty document. You know, they would provide a draft, the town staff would provide some feedback on it, so there'd be a little bit of back and forth. So it does take a little bit of time to work through that, but it's not particularly long amount of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion here before we take a vote? Anyone? Okay, Madam Clerk, we have, we have a motion, a mic and a second, but Darrell, there's been discussion. I'll call for the question. Would you please take a vote?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Mars?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Mrs. Wolf, thank you again. I don't see you on here anymore. But thank you again for your time and your research for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
You really are a part of us. You know that, don't you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We've got Mr. Danielson here from the county. I'd like to make a motion, we suspend Robert Trules of order, allow you to move that item up on the agenda so that he can go. He's been, he's got a long drive back home, and if you don't mind doing that.
Mr. Danielson?
I'll second that motion.
Let me, where is he on here, Seth?
It's under economic, it's economic...
Okay. I didn't see your name on there, Mr. Danielson. I did, I saw you out there, but I thought you were here for observation. Is it Tim?
Yes.
Your name wasn't on the agenda. I want to apologize. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to amend the agenda. and allow Mr. Danielson to come at this point. Is there a second to this motion? All right, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's a voice vote. Did everyone say yes, 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 yes? Six yeses, we're good. It carries, thank you. Mr. Danielson, please come forward.
Mayor, counsel, it's a pleasure to be here before you. I'm Director of Economic Development.
Where it said.
There's no button.
Keep looking.
That was a good trick. Anyway, it's a pleasure to be here before you, and I am the Director of Economic Development for Tasswell County. And I personally feel that I work for everyone within Tasswell County as well as yourself. I keep my cellphone with me all the time. I think Darrell and Seth would agree that I get back to them right away. But anyway, I wanted to come here and make you aware of myself. And, you know, our, our offices are open all the time for the citizens of Tasswell County.
I asked Tim to come because we brought up the, whether we needed to hire another economic development person or not. I had talked to Tim about him and Ashley helping us, and Seth suggested Tim come and said Seth's fault. That you're out late. So, but, so Tim, could you tell the council members, you know, what we can do? And I think Seth's probably got some questions for you also.
Sure, you know, my, my background, I was in site selection consulting in commercial real estate for 15 years. So I worked the corporate side of the transaction. Tasswell County hired me about a year ago to be their Director of Economic Development and to attract business to Tasswell County, all of Tasswell County, as well as serve the citizens of Tasswell County. I am aware that I hired your Economic Development Director to be a manager of economic development at Tasswell County. My feeling is, is that you are all welcome to lean on us if you need any assistance. And, you know, any advice. I mean, you're, you know, I have a breadth of knowledge in the, in commercial real estate and development. And Darrell and I talk frequently about different issues in that regard. And, and please feel free to utilize our office, myself, Ashley, if you have any needs in the areas of economic development or development.
You know, Tim, we, we looked at, we're just looking at some cost-saving items in our budget right now. And we feel like that if we utilize the county's economic department that we're all contributing to, all of our citizens are contributing to through their taxes, whatever, if we can utilize that, and these guys do agree, I can attest to that, they do a very good job. You know, we just wanted to feel like maybe we kind of develop a process here. We have a business, you know, that John can reach out to you guys and, and get them involved and get them in a loop.
Absolutely.
We kind of felt, and Darrell, through the discussion last time, we felt like that might be a good cost savings for us. You did steal our employee, so we were gonna kind of piggyback on that. And, but honestly, if we could, you know, I think that given what you guys do and you're, you're doing this full-time on a daily basis, you know what's going on. And I think if we can build that partnership, it's also gonna help folks on this end of the county. You can understand what we have here, what's available, you know, and make that a very good partnership with the county.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and.
Welcome, Tim. I'm glad you're here. I didn't know you were gonna be here, but I'm glad you're here. And I saw you sitting out there, cause I hadn't met you previously, but thank you for your offer of services from the county. And I understand the point of it and your being here as a, may I say, assistance, cost-saving measures. It's for you and for us. And any other, Seth, do you want to pursue any other avenues with Mr. Danielson tonight?
No, I think that's it. I just think, you know, anytime we can do, we talk about shared services a lot. And this is a really good opportunity for us to take advantage of something that the county pays for, that we don't have to pay for, but we can still use it.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we couldn't go back to something later on if we felt like that need was there.
Right.
But I think in the interim to fix some things and to be good stewards of our finances, it's a good opportunity for us to do that. And not lose a service for our folks, our businesses here.
Yes.
And Tim, I'm sorry, Tim, I'm on the Tasswell County IDA, and Tim and Kurt Breeding is also on this end of the county, is on the IDA. And Tim, he reaches out to everybody in the county. He just don't, doesn't work on one. He just don't take up for Tasswell or Bluefield. I mean, he works for the whole county. He will bring people. He's brought a number of people down this, on this end, and he's worked hard on the fish farm, on getting housing for the fish farm and everything. So he has helped us on this end and will continue.
And you owe me some figures, by the way.
Yeah, I know, I do. So, I mean, I just think it's a change to, to, to save the town some money. And maybe even have a better resource than what, you know, and I'm not talking about Ashley because I said in the interviews when, you know, the county harder. And so I'm not, but it, it can be a better resource than what we had before, I think. Cause you know, I think the reason Ashley went to the county because there's more opportunity for her to do more.
And she's, she's always available to, to the town of Richlands as well. So, but, but you're all free to call me if you feel that you have, you know, some questions or, you know, if you just want to kick some ideas, I'd be happy to give you my professional advice.
I was gonna, thank you, Tim. Do you have business cards you could distribute to many members of council? If not, maybe you can send an email to John.
They're out in my car, but I have them.
Maybe before you leave, he'll come in and give it to you.
Absolutely.
I have.
Any other thoughts?
Yes. Um, so as far as economic development and different grants that we would pursue from an economic standpoint, is, is your department prepared to, to handle the data, data, that if we were want to pursue that? Is that something you can do, you're willing to do for us? Is that what? I guess I'm curious as how that partnership would kind of work, cause we, it would, might be a lot of work.
Well, in, in the, in the area of grant writing, Cumberland Plateau is also supposed to be offering these services. I, I'm sure they, they would, they have resources to help with the grant writing. Tasswell County, we actually hire a firm to write grants for us. You know, there are consultants that do that, but I mean, I'd be happy to take a look at a grant. I have written grants before. So, you know, we can talk about what, what you might need. But, but sure.
Mike's referring more to like the administration of the grant. So if we have received a grant or we've already applied and received one, is that something y'all would pick up?
Uh, probably. I mean, I, I have to do that really now in, in some areas. In some areas, the manager, our, you know, Eric Young will, you know, will take the lead. It just depends on what the grant, you know, is it a federal grant? Is it, you know, a state grant, et cetera, but.
I've always found the, the county very open to working with the towns. All, we've always helped all the towns when I was on the county. And, you know, I, I don't, I think if you can present it specifically, maybe call Tim, present specifically what it is that you have. I think he let him take a look at it. I don't want to obligate him to something he's not looked at, but let him look at it and see if it's something he can help with.
Downtown revitalization grant.
Okay.
CBBG revolving loans.
CBBG, I was involved in one of those.
And then those are just in the top three, four.
Okay.
And I think it's in combination with working with your staff, I think that they could help with that.
If we don't hire somebody, it's either them or we just don't have the capacity to do these things. At that point, it would, we would have to start not doing things, kind of where we are. I, I can't take on a million-dollar downtown revitalization project even with kind of a plus O and be there assistance. I can't. And we don't have somebody that can take the lead on that or be a pop-up and, you know.
We've done one of those here before. Who, who managed that one?
Town staff.
Town staff did, yeah. I just think it's about maybe just, if you get their help, then, I don't know. I, I think we just, that's a discussion we need to have. I agree with you. But, I mean, I know that we did manage one of those revitalization grants before.
At that time, we had, one of the requirements, and I don't recall exactly how it goes. So please understand if I misstep or make a statement that is not full and complete. We did hire a downtown coordinator. His name was Brian Wright, and he left the town for a job at the community college. He was the downtown coordinator. That was specifically for that grant. And they required it at the time. Todd Christensen was very involved at the time. I think he might have retired. I don't remember. But I can't remember the details. It's been almost 20 years, I guess, since that. But it was a complex process, but not anything anybody couldn't understand. Some people participated and some didn't. But the bulk of that was handled here at the town hall. But maybe to understand the position, your position, John, and the staff, maybe Richlands has become more complex. And there's more to do. I don't know. I can't speak to that. But I am saying that it was pretty much handled in-house. And then also, there was a very strong team of volunteers who did a lot of work pro bono for the town. And I would start listing them, but I'm sure I'll leave someone out. But they met regularly and for that. And they were very skilled and attended lots of meetings at all levels to understand how the downtown revitalization project went. Todd Christensen, it'll come to me, there's another person, he's still involved with the state, who helped a lot. And he came here frequently to work with us. And if I, I'll try to, maybe I can help assist with this. I'll get back in the records, if I can find them, and I think I can, of how we did it that time. I'm sure that rules and regulations always change because that's what we can be sure of, is change. But maybe the guidelines of the past will lead us to the future.
Do you have a list of job duties that our Economic Development Director would, would do? Like a strong list of, of actual job duties?
I mean, I would have to work with Connie and Ashley to get a, you know, we have the job description, but it doesn't include, like, you know, we got a call the other day, you know, somebody asking about Veterans Day banners that we put up. And that's something that, you know, that position is always handled. So it's, there's a lot of those, you know.
So they're doing more than economic development.
I can tell you, let me interrupt just for a minute and mention one thing about the revitalization. The group that was really involved, they were a citizen group largely, we did hire Brian Wright to be the downtown coordinator. I think that was almost like a requirement, not to be wrong. So give me a little grace if I misspeak. But there was a very strong local group who met regularly, openly, publicly, all those things that you should do to guide. And their sole purpose was not anything but revitalization that grant, not anything else. All the other things that happened at that time, which may not be as involved, that's what we're doing now with banners and pop-ups, other things have come along for the town, those weren't going on, so that I know of. So I'm saying the strong, a very strong group of volunteers did it with the help of town staff. But that's the end, Mrs. Neil.
So what you're telling me is even though it's listed as an econ.
There's, there's still some of the community development stuff that Connie started. Then over the, either last year, we've started transitioning more to the economic development. But there's certain things, like you can't just stop putting up Veterans banners, or there's things that, you know, we're still expected to do that, you know, that job will kind of always handle.
Okay, so I think the best thing.
Mr. Danielson, sorry. Jeff just reminded me that you're part of this conversation, and I do appreciate it.
I just didn't want him standing there. I didn't know if we had any other questions for him, but I'll be talking.
Well, you're part of it, and if you're going to be helping us, you need to be privy to all of this. And I apologize for the delay. Where do you have to go to? Tasswell?
No, I go to Bluefield. I live in Bluefield.
Well, fortunately, that's within a drop of a distance. Go ahead, Mike.
I, I just, I think it'll be good for John and Tim to connect and identify what the county would be willing to, to do for us before we make a decision on if it's gonna be feasible enough.
Is that just carte blanche?
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
I would be grateful if you stayed everything.
Yeah, and, and you know, I don't know a lot about grants and stuff. I don't want to say I do. But I would think it, like this gentleman, you all heard Rod, I'm sure he got paid out of the grant?
No.
No? The town had?
Grants don't really pay people. There are very small parts, and I'm not a grant expert. We keep talking about that. I don't think they actually pay people. You get a very small percentage of that for writing it, and maybe a tiny fraction for administration. Most of that pay for grant money comes from the people who apply for the grant, us. Would you say that's possible?
What's possible?
That, how people get paid who do these grants?
Um, to, I, at, at my firm in Chicago, we had a person that did grant writing for communities. So it, from, from our perspective, it was a consulting position. So we would, we would charge like an annual fee. And there are consultants who specialize in, in just grant writing for communities, so. And then there's also law firms. It just depends on, you know, how sophisticated and how much money you're, you're, you're chasing. But, I mean, there are law firms in Washington that, that, that's all they do. And they'll, they'll represent you for a whole year on, on writing your grants. And then there's also consultants that do that.
Have we been awarded these grants already?
One of them, we've been awarded the money for the architect, so who will do the plans, and then will apply for the downtown revitalization. I've got USDA keeps calling me back, asking about a $75,000 revolving loan fund for small businesses. We, you know, Phase Two of the Greenspace that, you know, we had applied for. We didn't finish Phase One yet, so they're waiting for us to apply for Phase Two. They essentially already awarded Phase Two, but because of the timeline, they had to take the money back, but I anticipate them awarding that. So there's several that you're either out there or we're in the process of. And, you know, I think that, you know, we can definitely build a better relationship with you, Tim, and the county. I just am a little afraid that if we throw all of our stuff on them, it's gonna be more than they expected. And then, you know, they're gonna, you know, we can't do all this, you know, and then, you know, we're stuck. Trying to figure out, you know, what do we want to do, or, you know, how are we gonna, you know, handle it moving forward?
What do we prioritize?
Well, I think you guys have a conversation over the next week before we meet again, and we can bring this back up.
Yeah.
On the 24th.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Danielson.
I mean, if it ain't, if it's not good for the town and good for, you know, the county, you know, I don't want to do it. But I, but we need to, you know, lay on Tim and get his help and stuff, even if we do hire economic.
Well, I want to say thank you to Seth and thank you to Darrell for having you come. And we hope that we can be an integral part of one another. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'll bring you my cards.
Yes, have a safe trip back to Bluefield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, we're moving on to, so we're, I think we're on item C. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, invoice cloud discussion. We have Adam Eck, who we met previously via Zoom. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Are you here, Adam?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you guys really well. Thanks, thanks for having me again, everybody.
So Adam, do you mind just giving a, you know, a thousand-foot view of what we discussed at the last council meeting to refresh everybody's memory, and for the ones that weren't here, bring them up to speed on kind of what we're considering?
Yeah, of course. So I've been working with Heather, Amanda, and Frank for the past couple of months to just address some issues and some challenges that they've been having in relation to providing a better online experience for your utility customers. So Heather had let me know that they were actually originally evaluating going through an entire core software change, which really is a quite considerable expense and time commitment. Usually when I work with municipalities that are thinking about going through entire core software changes, it's sometimes a six-figure price tag. And so what Heather, Frank, and Amanda were looking to do was largely centered around driving efficiency in the office of free of time to focus on other responsibilities. They found that a lot of their time is being spent dealing with common customer service issues, I mean, challenges that utility customers have been having within the online bill pay. challenges that utility customers have been having within the online bill pay experience. So Invoice Cloud right now is, we have over 2,000 local governments and utilities who are currently partnered with specifically drive online adoption, in some cases, lower processing costs, which I'm happy to report that, were able to do for Richland, I mean, just raise resident satisfaction overall as well. So on our last call about a month ago, we went through pricing, and I believe the mayor had asked just to have some time to, you know, live over a contract with a proposal and give the council time to digest all of the information that's been provided as well. And before we open up discussion, I spoke with Heather, and we had felt like what we really wanted to stress about why there's a lot of mutual interest, a high level of mutual interest in partnership between Invoice Cloud and Richland, is really centered around just making it easier for people to pay their utility bills online. As I've been a part of your meetings for the past couple of months, I know that high electricity, utility rates, and potential rate hikes are sensitive topics. And that's why Heather had let me know essentially, you know, it's a nonstarter if you're going to come in here and raise up convenience fee rates. So not only was I able to get cheaper processing rates, but we really wanted to focus on, and convey to the council and to the mayor and everyone on this meeting today that our platform truly is very, very simple and straightforward to use. When that happens, efficiencies are created for all stakeholders involved as well.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion from council on Invoice Cloud from Adam Eck. Adam, are you open to any questions at this time?
Yep.
Are you open?
Just to put it out there, I know that there was a little bit of discussion about the convenience fee structure. And I do want to convey that for both credit and debit card processing costs, as well as us being able to offer electronic check processing, we are coming in lower on both fronts. When people would, when your utility customers would use our platform, they'd be able to process their payments significantly cheaper while being provided a more intuitive online experience as well. So in all scenarios, regardless of what payment method they choose, it will be cheaper than the convenience fees that are currently being offered at this very moment as well.
Yeah, I was very impressed with his presentation last time. I think it's definitely something we need to move forward with.
I'd like to hear Heather's opinion.
Heather?
I just wanted to see if he would mention the fact that we actually wouldn't pay anything until they got all of their software set up and make sure everything works correctly. Do you care to speak on that for just a brief second, Adam?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up, Heather. So Invoice Cloud, we built out over 140 different integrations with core software. There's actually a municipality in Massachusetts that's also using Logix, which is the core accounting and system of record software for all utility customers at Richland. So we've already taken a look and vetted the software for compatibility in order to build out an integration. And providing an integration is really important, right? So that's how we do things like provide accurate customer balance data, how we send out electronic reminders via email and text message that are specific to each customer account, right? So building an integration really is going to be the backbone of how our software will work cooperatively with Logix. Now, what we do to protect all of our clients is that we do not charge any upfront implementation cost. And this is really important. And it also will allow you guys to be protected in the event of this somehow happening where we would be unable to successfully complete an integration and go live on behalf of Richland. We make sure that you guys are indemnified of all of that risk. It's really difficult in the space. I'm confident in the resources that we have at our disposal and the expertise that we have on our implementation and integration team. So I let Heather and Frank and Amanda know that, you know, potential integration timeline is anywhere from three to five months from a project kickoff call. And there are no charges. The only time a bill will come for Invoice Cloud is after we are live for one month and we've begun to provide that platform that drives the benefits for the customers and staff as well. So zero upfront cost.
And Heather, John, what's the difference in overall annual price between what we have now and what this is for us?
The difference for the town or the customers? The customers are definitely paying.
Yeah, customers are cheaper. Yeah.
Cheaper.
What's about the town?
Ours will vary because it just depends on how many checks we process. And that was another reason that I, I do want to, you know, I want to move forward with this because we are getting fees from the bank for when we run those checks through. And ultimately, as Adam and I talked about, like, that would eventually help save us money. Will it save us money immediately? No. The cost is going to be similar. But through the people getting used to the new online, I feel like they would be easier to use it as, because it's more like a Amazon, you know, one, two clicks and you're done. Then it would stop them from having to drive down here and pay with a check. I mean, not everyone, but there's a percentage there. I mean, you wouldn't, I mean, a lot of people are going to pay with a check no matter what. But it ultimately would have lower our processing costs that we're receiving just from processing it through the bank, not including the processing charges that we have with the current carrier that with that 800 number and.
So potentially, it saves the town money.
Exactly. But just won't be immediately.
While also saving money for the customer.
That's correct.
All right.
If you don't mind, Heather, I can also speak a little bit to this as well. So I think Heather and Amanda can vouch for me on this, this whole process that I've been going through with them has been centered around getting to know the billing and collection process intimately, and being able to quantify the efficiencies that our platform will create. And I can provide some estimates right now, and I think that would probably be helpful for the council to hear. So we've got a monthly access fee cost of $125 a month. So multiplying that by 12 and getting that annual estimate is about $1,500. Now, in many cases, our platform completely pays for itself when we drive paperless billing. So our platform's really successful at doing this typically. We drive up the number of people going paperless by about 300% in the first year of partnership. So, you know, tripling the number of people going paperless and where cost savings materialize are directly in a reduction of print and postage suppression costs, right? So that's a piece. What I calculated is when we drive about 20% paperless adoption, which is our average around the Northeast and East, is about 20% after the first year. So that would actually cancel out the entire cost of a monthly access fee and then some. So that's one example. Another example is us reducing the number of delinquencies and shut-offs. Right now, Heather and her staff manually send out delinquency notices, which, again, costs with all of the materials and time involved. Our platform is also very successful at reducing delinquencies. So what I was able to do is I was able to create an estimate, and based around a certain efficiency metric that we drive, the cost of Invoice Cloud would really hang out at around $80 or $90 a month. Now, I calculated these costs at certain metrics that we arrive at about six to eight months of going live. After our platform has been live for 15 to 18 months, we continue to drive engagement and adoption levels even higher. So there's great potential for our platform to completely eliminate all costs and actually help Richland go positive as well.
Adam, what does your implementation timeline look like if we were able to, if we were to go with this? Is that what he said he was?
Yes. So that's something that I spoke with Heather about. We're looking to hopefully get a signed contract from you guys and a formal council approval so that we can get together with Heather and Frank and build out a timeline. A typical timeline for integration implementation process, like what we'll undergo through for Richland, will be anywhere from 90 to 150 days. And we will be in touch with Heather about the anticipated go-live. We'll continue to work with Frank as well in IP. And we're just completely transparent about what that timeline looks like. There are some deliverables that we'll need from Richland. And so if Heather and Amanda and Frank are super bogged down and they can't get us some light integration specific information that we need in a timely manner, we just can't guarantee an implementation time period based on there being variables, working with you guys as a third party. But if everything goes well and information's provided back and forth in a timely manner, typically three months on the fast end, up to five months on a little bit of a longer as well.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
What, do you need a motion?
What was that?
I was just asking what they needed to move forward. So I'll put that in a motion that we move to this form of billing that'll save.
Invoice Cloud.
Invoicing that'll save money for constituents.
For Invoice Cloud. That's the company name, I think. Is that correct?
Yeah, Invoice Cloud.
Okay. There's a motion to move forward to employ the services of Invoice Cloud. Is that sufficient, Seth? Okay, for the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Seth and a second by Mike. Is there any discussion on this motion? Would that save you time in the office for your personnel, the finance office? Ed?
It's hopeful.
Pardon?
It's hopeful, yes.
Okay. Any other, thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Okay, there being no further questions. I'll ask a roll call vote. Becca?
Yes.
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Darryl?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Adam. So John, you can move forward with that. Sir?
Oh, I was just going to say, awesome. So what I'll do is I will get a contract created hopefully by the end of the week. And what we encourage to do is have the legal team review it. Heather, I don't know if you've been able to get that accomplished or not. I'll send you an email about that process, having a legal review, and then we'll get it signed, and we will be able to connect to begin implementation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move to the next item on the agenda. Sir?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time.
We're looking forward to partnership with Richland. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Let's move forward on the agenda. Roman number 11, item D, committee member update. These are for, these are not committees. I should have corrected that. These are commissions, commission member update. Council appointment to the REC Commission. I talked to Jeff, and Jeff is willing to move from Planning Commission as a representative to the REC Commission. Jeff, are you still willing to do that?
So far, yes.
Okay. Well.
In the last few days, I've maintained the course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, I will appoint you to be council's representative to the Recreation Commission. And thank you, Jeff. Thank you for your service previously. The planning, and now for REC. Now, for council appointment to the Planning Commission, I spoke with Kristin, and she is willing to accept the appointment to be council's representative to the Planning Commission. Are you still good with that, Kristin? Yes. So Kristin Thompson-Witt will be, Whit Thompson, whatever, Thompson-Witt will be council's liaison representative to the Planning Commission. And John, if you will take care of all the appropriate measures for both these members, all the documents. Jeff probably has one on file, but have you done your statement of economic interest?
No, I haven't.
You'll need that for the council and the Planning Commission. Do you have yours in place, Jeff? Thank you.
All right. As we're on that, if you look to the list of all the members on those, I guess advisory boards or commissions, we have several that are coming up and their terms expire next month. If you would like to go ahead and renew those terms for an additional term, we do it this time. I haven't reached out to all these individuals, but I haven't heard from any of them saying they don't want to serve, but I'll leave that up to council.
May we reach out at the next meeting? Because I have, I saw that, John, but I've not contacted members of the Planning Commission. And I suggest that we reach out to these people personally so that we know whether they want to be tenure or not. And I have not done that.
All right.
Mayor, if I may, under, under the charter, you have the ability to recommend if the council would approve those changes or those.
Okay. I would entertain a motion that, you're talking about the commission appointments?
Yes, for the REC Commission and the.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept Jeff Hurst as our representative to the Recreation Commission. We'll take them as separate motions. Is there a motion to accept Jeff?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike makes the motion, and Darryl seconds the motion to accept Jeff as our representative to the Recreation Commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, there being no discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
You can vote.
Okay.
Doug?
Yes.
Kristin? Yes.
Darryl?
Yes.
Mike? Yes. Seth? Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right. I will note that the topic of these individuals being sworn in, we will be going through, making sure everybody's sworn in, and before their next meeting is to make sure everybody's up to date on those. We've had a lot of turnovers, I'm sure. There are some that have been missed, but we're going to go through and make sure everybody's up to date for the.
For IDA?
For all of them. You make sure they all meet all the requirements.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your attending to that. Next, E is appointment of a vice mayor. Typically, we have had a motion and a second and vote on a vice mayor from one of the members of the council. So the floor is open to nominations for a vice mayor. Mary Ann was the vice mayor. She resigned, so we, that position is vacant.
I'll make a motion to appoint Seth White as vice mayor.
Okay, there's a motion to appoint Seth White as the vice mayor.
I'd second that.
There's a second to appoint Seth White as the vice mayor. Is there any discussion? Typically, we have had a motion and a second and vote on a vice mayor from one of the members of the council. So the floor is open to nominations for a vice mayor. Mary Ann was the vice mayor. She resigned, so we, that position is vacant.
I'll make a motion to appoint Seth White as vice mayor.
Okay, there's a motion to appoint Seth White as the vice mayor.
I'd second that.
There's a second to appoint Seth White as the vice mayor. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Seth, congratulations, you're another vice mayor. Thank you. Okay, moving on. This, we have a resolution for public comment policies and procedures. It's item F. If you'll please locate that. And we need to read, here's the board members. Okay. This is going to be resolution number R 2022 0501. Does everyone have this in front of them? Okay, I will read this and we'll have other people read all these other ordinances as is appropriate and resolutions. Shall we? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, resolution R 2022 0501, amendment to replace an embedded resolution, Town of Richland's Public Comment Rules and Procedures, be it ordained by the council of the Town of Richland, Virginia, that hereby adopts the following public comment rules and procedures pursuant to the Virginia Code of Ordinances, Public Comment Rules and Procedures. The Town Council values the opinions of its citizens and welcomes public comment on items of town interest at our monthly meetings. The Town Council wishes to facilitate the orderly reception and dissemination of information that the Town Council determines that can be best accomplished in an environment where the rules of conduct are clearly established. Individuals that wish to speak at a monthly Town Council meeting must sign up prior to the public comment period. Speakers are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person unless prior arrangements have been made with the mayor or the Town Council due to adjustments to the agenda, increases or reduces the time limit. Public comment rules. The Town Council values the opinions of its citizens and welcomes public comment on items of town interest at our monthly meetings. The Town Council wishes to facilitate the orderly reception and dissemination of information that the Town Council determines that this can best be accomplished in an environment where the rules of conduct are clearly established. One, each speaker should be limited to a maximum comment period of three, five minutes.
The three should be removed. It should just be five.
Wasn't reading right. Please strike that, the word three. Number two, no speaker should be permitted to cede his or her five-minute allotment to another speaker. Three, each speaker shall speak from the podium or microphone and shall state his or her name and address for the record. Four, the timekeeper will begin the speaker's time when the speaker is finished stating their name and address. The timekeeper will raise his hand or her, his or her hand notifying the mayor and speaker that only thirty seconds remain. The same signal will be given when the speaker has reached the end of their allotted time. If a timekeeper is not present, the mayor will dictate how time will be kept and enforced. Documents, any speaker who intends to produce a report, diagram, map, photograph, compilation of data, or other document to the Town Council at a meeting shall also provide the Town Clerk or their designated ten hard copies and, if possible, one electronic copy of all documents prior to the Town Council meeting so that the documents may be maintained as part of the record of the meeting decorum. Comments by citizens are limited to statements by persons recognized to speak with the mayor. Speakers may not engage the Town Council members or town employees in a question and answer exchange unless authorized by the mayor. The Town Council requests civility and public discourse and requires that speakers refrain from language which would incite an immediate breach of the peace. And further requires that speakers refrain from undue repetition, extended discussion of irrelevancies, use of obscenities, and/or personal attacks. Any person who violates these rules can be declared out of order by the mayor and a person who persists in violating these rules can be removed from the meeting. A motion was seconded, made by and seconded by, and we have votes of members of council. I have my own thoughts on this, but I will ask for thoughts from the council before we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know that I'm, again, new here and I'm trying to catch up with what you guys are doing, but.
You're fine, Mr. White.
Just as a, just as a fundamental point of free speech, I just, I really have an issue with this with some of the things in here. You know, I think it's okay to establish time limits and I think we do that. You know, we used to do that on board supervisors, beginning of the year, and we would just publish that in our documents. You know, you have two minutes or three minutes or whatever that is. I don't have any issue with that. And I think it's just, I just, it's just very slippery slope because, let's just say, for instance, what if I show up to the meeting late and I want to speak? I would hope that I would still have an opportunity to do that, but I may not if we, if we have these rules. If I don't have, if I have a letter or a document, I don't have ten copies that I brought with me. You know, I understand, I think I understand the idea of what you're trying to do, but also, you know, I mean, we are elected to this position, or in our case, is appointed, some of us. But when you serve in a public capacity, you have to have thick skin. And everybody has an opportunity, if you're a citizen of this town and you want to come in here and speak, you know, they have an opportunity and a right to say whatever it is, you know, but there are consequences that come with your actions, you know? So, under those guise. And I think that most people, you know, have enough personal responsibility to keep some decorum in their actions. But I just, I'm just telling you my opinion, this is the first time I've seen this and I have no idea anything else, but I would just have a real hard time, I would have a real hard time, you know, supporting this. One thing I've learned from public meetings is that most of the time, people just need to really speak what it is that's on their mind. The problems that I always run into or have seen in public meetings is when the council or someone tries to engage that person. You know, that's usually when there's, when the back and forth happens, it's not happening from the citizen's side, but when they're engaged from this, from this pulpit, so to speak. So I feel like that's when that happens. And I just, you know, I don't know. I feel like this is very rigid and maybe not conducive to free speech. I just don't feel like I could support it in this current graph.
I appreciate that. I will go ahead and add my thoughts on this. We had an embedded resolution and has been discussed ad libitum fairly. That being said, one particular part that I would prefer as the mayor, or if I were on council, is having people sign up prior to it. It's basically saying, if you aren't, didn't know to sign up prior, you can't speak. And I think that limits free speech. And I am very concerned about that particular part. We did have a discussion, Seth, prior to your being on the council, about taking away the three minutes and the five minutes so we don't have all the confusion who gets three and who gets five. And there was a hearty discussion, and we just thought, generally speaking, on behalf of council, if I'm wrong, I appreciate your saying so, members of council, just to move it to five minutes, we're clear, everybody has five minutes, whether they're here or not. So personally, this, this particular part where we say prior to public, you have to sign up prior, I think is a slippery slope. And I, it's, I'm afraid that it could be constitutionally challenged. As far as the ten copies, with that was in the embedded resolution, I think. And the purpose, it might not be practical, but everybody understands, but they may not, people may not understand. The reason for those ten copies is to readily make them available to members of council, the manager, the town attorney, the clerk, and any staff members who want them. Sometimes that isn't always possible for people. So while it is, I understand the goal. I've always personally questioned it. We've never, in my knowledge, to my knowledge, members of council, please help me, have we ever had anyone come to this council and speak and we said, you didn't have ten copies, you're out of order?
We had tonight. Didn't we not? We had a situation, we had a situation tonight. That very situation, right?
But we didn't declare them out of order.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So what do you do? I mean, that's why, there's not really much you can do. I mean, I don't want to not speak or declare them out of order.
Do we need that in there, Jeff?
Just take it out.
We went and made copies. We went and made copies.
Right.
I mean, that's what we always did. You know, and telling some people, if you're coming to make a presentation, I'm gonna bring copies, I'm bringing something before you. But not everybody thinks that way and it may be important.
So my point is that, can we just strike that, members of council?
I think that's reasonable.
You're not enforcing it anyway.
What about? We have it, that's what I'm saying.
What about the rest that Seth said? I think it's limiting freedom of speech and I think to run the meeting, that's your call, the mayor's call when someone's out of order or.
Which part in particular? You're talking about the specific.
Public discourse, refrain from undue repetition, extended discussion of use of obscenities, personal attacks, that's your call as mayor.
Right. I think probably, and this is just a thought, and it's a council decision here, we could leave that, that gives the mayor the opportunity to have backing. Okay? That is something that the mayor could stand behind, but it's up to the discretion of the mayor to enforce that or not. The ten copies, I don't think we've ever really enforced it. We copy all the time for people. So that's my thought, but thank you for your thought, Doug. Any other members of council have thoughts on this? I'll go individually. Jeff, your thoughts, please?
Yeah, I think, I think we've been overly accommodating and I think we need to stay that way. You know, even if they didn't sign up or if they're not out there, you know, I mean, we've done it in meetings, started, hey, I signed up. Or we didn't see it. Or we didn't see the sheet out there. I mean, it is.
That's a toughie.
Yeah, that's, that's tough to know. And then people don't know the policy or procedure unless you've been involved in it before. And if somebody came and like, oh, wait, what was I supposed to do? Because they don't know. Maybe they don't know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Doug, more thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think the five minutes is fine. We want to keep as open as we can to the citizens to speak when they want to. And I don't think we should limit anything. I think that's your call and I couldn't vote for anything on this but the five minutes.
Okay. Chris?
Could we amend it just to say with a hard copy and, if possible, an electronic copy? And just put, if possible, on both of those so that if they are thinking ahead, it's in there and if not, it's not.
So instead of with ten, with a hard copy? Or the Daisy with the hard copy, is that your suggestion?
An electronic copy, if possible. Just if possible for both of them.
And if possible. So we'll add if possible. And one electronic copy, if possible, because even they were in the high tech age, everybody has that ability.
Right, right.
Okay. We have that at school. It's hard to really understand it, but we really do. And it's an awakening.
But that way they have something that says, we're requesting you bring one. If you don't, it's, you know, probably not gonna matter.
Any other, okay, Darrell, your thoughts? Thank you, Chris. Your thoughts?
I mean, I think if you're not enforcing some of these, anything you're not enforcing should be took out. I mean, if you're not enforcing the ten copies, take it out.
We have, we've, we've copied lots for people and I think it's necessary. I agree with that. Thank, anything else, Darrell? Mike, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with council. I think it's important to have a process. Do we, we currently have, we currently have an embedded resolution, correct?
We do.
So of all the things listed here, besides changing three minutes to five minutes from, you know, someone that's already signed up, someone that's coming unscheduled, what are the changes here, though? Is, is my, my question.
That's, that's really it.
That's it.
I mean, those are the main things.
So essentially, we could just make a vote to change our current embedded resolution to say you get five minutes.
Well, I don't have a separation, because it's like hidden in there.
Right, right, right.
But essentially, it's.
I'm saying hypothetically, that's what.
I have a copy of what we have in place.
One significant difference, so I'll add this. An embedded resolution is an unusual word. Resolutions at their best should be just like this with the number and properly recorded. The embedded resolution was voted on, but it was placed inside the minutes and that's what means, that's what embedded means. So it isn't, it's less than open and you have to hunt for it. You can find it, but you have to hunt for it. And that's, I think, the important thing we're trying to do. Seth, wrote the comments?
Yeah, just, you know, looking through this, under the decorum section, you know, I think item A is okay, because I think that's where your, your problems arise. But I really think that, you know, B and C, you're getting into some gray area about infringing upon free speech. I mean, the reality is, we live in America. I may not like what I have to say, but I have a right to say it. Just like anybody that come in here and they may not like me or you or Doug or Jeff or whoever, but that's part of serving in a public office. And, you know, I understand the idea of it, but I just, I can't support anything that infringes upon anyone's ability to speak and say whatever they want, whether it's radical, I agree with it or just, it doesn't matter. And I just.
Well, I would suggest that in. Look at item B and it says, the Town Council requests civility and public discourse. I think that's a reasonable thing. That is subject to what is civil, but it, it gives whoever's conducting the meeting something to stand behind, hopefully. It requires that speakers refrain from language which would incite an immediate breach of the peace. And further requires, I just think, put a period right there, we could take out undue repetition. What may be repetition to me isn't repetition to someone else. Extended discussion of irrelevancies, what's relevant to me may not be relevant to someone else. Obscenities are obvious, that is not acceptable. Personal attacks are not acceptable. We've had that and we've tried to correct that. So I would personally, from my point of view, suggest we leave in the first sentence and just say an immediate breach of the peace and let it go. Item C, any person who violates these rules can be declared out of order by the mayor. That's okay. It could actually happen. My thoughts, but here is a suggestion from me to you. Can we ask that this resolution be rewritten with our suggestions and represented to this council? Too many changes to even try to vote on it in its current form.
What changes is there consensus on?
I can give you my draft copy. Would you like me to read this and just leave it out? Or Jeff, do you have your copy amended for what I was doing? You're a good reader. Thank you, Jeff.
Can you just read the changes?
I'll get it to you.
Just a minute, please. Darrell? Okay. I just didn't want the appearance of a sidebar. Okay, it's not cool.
Agreed.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Darrell. Okay, if you go to public comment rules and procedures, one third paragraph down, we will strike, individuals that wish to speak at a monthly Town Council meeting should, should sign up or can, should sign up or appeared person. Something to that effect.
So, so if somebody's sure they want to speak, what, what are they expected to do? Just?
They would, you know, typically, John, in the past, before we had signup sheets, the mayor, be it myself, Jim White, Ken Weiser, or anyone else, Mr. Crawford, would always say, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? And that allows people to stand up and say yes. And we'll add Heather Perry to the agenda.
So should we write something like that in there? So.
I suggest this.
If somebody reads this, they know, if I want to speak at public comment, I show up, I sit in there, the mayor will ask, or like.
Must sign up or be present. How's that? Must sign up or be present.
What if they're walking halfway through?
That's my call.
Mayor, why don't, why don't you two work together? I think we're all in alignment with what you're saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying, before we get into a grammatical discussion here in grammar, why don't I get with you, John?
Just bring it back.
And present.
You know, you know.
Okay, we'll learn at the details.
That's what I was gonna suggest is, and maybe Seth could sit down if you want to and go through that.
That's fine. I'll work with you, John. Would you like to work on that, Seth?
Sure, I'd be glad to have you.
All right, let's find a meeting if it can be had. It will not be this week. It might not be next week before our meeting. It could be at the June meeting before I'm able to meet with you. Thank you. I'll be in touch with you, Seth, and with you, John. We'll find a meeting if it can be had, Tom. Okay? All right, thank you for the great input, council. It's very important. Okay, so we are now on item G, rezoning requests and ordinances. If you'll please look here in your packet, we've got the right ones. We have got ordinance, we have two ordinances for rezoning, and they are digits ending in 06 and 07. Do you have these in front of you, council?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, I will ask that Jeff Malina, you to read ordinance 0, or O2 actually, 2022-05-06.
Sure, ordinance number O-2022-05-06, amendment to existing ordinance, title 15, land usage. Chapter 154 zoning, Town of Richlands zoning map, be it ordained by the Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, that it hereby enacts the following changes to the Town of Richlands zoning map pursuant to 154.015B and 154.205 of the Town of Richlands, Virginia Code of Ordinances in order to reclassify the zoning designations of certain parcels of real property located within the town limits identified below and to reconfigure the Town of Richlands zoning map accordingly. Tax map parcel numbers 105A408110017-0018. Reclassify from industrial, general district M1, to residential, general district R2.
Okay. Says all of the designations as indicated on the zoning map remain unchanged for a reading, second reading. Okay, I do have a question for the town attorney. I don't see anything in here for us to... This is the first reading, am I correct? May we dispense with the first reading? And what would you like us to do, town attorney?
You could dispense with the second reading and pass it tonight.
As an emergency ordinance? All right, dispense with the second reading?
Yes. There'll be, need to be an affirmative vote for members of council.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you. So how should this motion be entertained? A motion to dispense with the...
Second reading.
Second reading. Okay, we've had the first reading.
Right.
Making sure. Okay, so we've had a first reading. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading of this ordinance?
And it be passed as an emergency ordinance?
Pass it as an emergency ordinance.
So moved.
Jeff makes the motion. Is there a second to dispense with the second reading of the ordinance O-2022-05-06 and pass this as an emergency ordinance? Jeff makes the motion. Daryl seconds the motion. Is there any discussion?
I was just going to ask you what property we're talking about, but I figured I Googled it here.
I think this is going to be...
We talked about...
This is the Magic Mart property.
Yes.
A planning commission. We've met with all the parties.
They've gone through all the proper procedures.
We recommended that the council change that. Okay.
I don't have any issue with that. I just wanted to know what we were talking about.
Yeah, and then that property's over on Augusta Street.
Where's Augusta?
Behind, across the railroad tracks from Burger King. Right across, if you went right across, out the front street, Burger King, across the railroad tracks.
Seth, so you'll know on this Augusta property, the lady was actually here who owned it, because I didn't know either. And this is the property that Travis has purchased right here.
This one, but you're going to reclassify it from industrial to residential?
I think it's the opposite. The other one is the Magic Mart property.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, that'd make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, this is the Augusta.
Let me put the addresses in there.
So the Magic Mart was residential before?
No.
No, it's the business.
This is actually the Augusta ordinance.
All right, the ordinance numbers are wrong. Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
I spoke incorrectly. Seth, 06 is this property over in the Brickyard that has been in transit for a long time. Twenty or thirty years ago, it was also an industrial where the train company is, and there are parts of it that remain residential. And the planning commission, when I was on there, actually recommended that we take two particular parcels and rezon them residential so that people could build on those. And this is a furthering of making that area residential.
I got you. So which one are we talking about right now?
06.
Augusta.
Okay.
Which is Augusta Avenue. I appreciate that.
The planning commission recommended both of them.
And they went through all the proper procedures, and so we had a joint public hearing for it.
Did anyone speak at either of those? Any citizens?
Yes.
I think the owner of this property spoke. Augusta Avenue. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is that correct?
Correct.
No further discussions. Anyone? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, council. The next ordinance, Kristen Malina, you to read this one. This is ordinance...
I think that was to dispense with the second reading.
Oh, yes, I'm bad. I need to have a motion. I'm so sorry. Thank you for your help. So we dispense with the second reading. Now we have to have a motion to accept the ordinance. Is that correct? Thank you for your guidance. I appreciate that. All right, so let's have a motion to accept the ordinance, 06.
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance.
Okay, all right. To be clear, it's ordinance O-2022-05-06. Jeff has made the motion to accept the ordinance. Seth seconds the motion. Any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, council. The next ordinance is ordinance number O-2022-05-07. I've asked Kristen to read this publicly.
Ordinance number 02022-05-07, amendment to existing ordinance, title 15, land usage, chapter 154 zoning, Town of Richlands zoning map, be it ordained by the Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, that it hereby enacts the following changes to the Town of Richlands zoning map pursuant to 154.015B and 154.0, sorry, 154.205 of the Town of Richlands, Virginia Code of Ordinances in order to reclassify the zoning designations of certain parcels of real property located within the town as identified below and to reconfigure the Town of Richlands zoning map accordingly. Tax map parcel numbers 105A5090149-0161. To reclassify from business, general district B2, to industrial, general district M1, To reclassify from business, general district B2, to industrial, general district M1.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we have before to have a first reading. Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance O-2022-05-07?
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Wait, we're going to dispense with the second reading and pass it as an emergency measure?
Yes, we're going to, pardon me, we need to dispense with the second reading. Thank you, Jeff. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading and pass this as an emergency measure?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, Jeff makes the motion, and Kristen seconds. Any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Now, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance O-2022-05-07?
So moved.
There's a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kristen makes the second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote. Becca?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next. We've taken care of the rezoning request ordinances, so we're moving on to appointment of town FOIA clerk. Probably a better word there is administrator, or what was the best word, John?
Officer.
Officer, thank you. So if you'll, let's have this discussion as appointment of a town FOIA officer. Because I'd called, John, and said, what is this all about? It needs to be appointed properly as the officer, because I never thought of you as a clerk, and I didn't know what we're doing. Thank you. So appointment of a town FOIA clerk. John, would you like to address this?
Essentially, it's about a year ago, Wayne was doing all our FOIA requests. It got to a point where it was cost prohibitive and just too much of a burden on him. At that time, council essentially instructed me to handle those requests moving forward. At that time, I don't think it was an official vote or official appointment as the FOIA officer. So it's just kind of cleaning that up so we can get that officially on record.
Is there any clarity that's needed from council on what we're doing here?
And you're going to undergo some training?
I've already completed the training.
Okay, great.
Any other questions from council? Is there a motion to appoint John O'Daniel as the FOIA officer for the Town of Richlands that goes with his regular duty as manager?
I'll make a motion.
The motion is made, but Daryl, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds. Is there any discussion on this motion to appoint John O'Daniel as the town's FOIA officer?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, like you shared earlier, we got this FOIA packet, and I think our members are going to study that, make sure that they understand how that works. And we'll just ask that, you know, we just continue to do a good job. Somebody asks us for something, we send that to John, make sure he knows about it when it happened, Tom, the question as specific as possible. And just ask to make sure that, you know, I know it's, he's assuming a responsibility because he only has a limited amount of time to accomplish it. So I think it's the right procedural thing to do.
It is. Thank you, Seth. That was my question. Do you have enough time to do this, Mr. O'Daniels? Pardon?
No, but somebody's got to get done.
So you do have, you'll make the time?
Yeah.
That's what we need to know. Thank you, John. Doug, is there help you? He'll make the time? All right, so there was a motion and a second. You made the motion, you seconded it. All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Becca?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you, members of council. Okay, item J is proposed 2022-2023 budget, first reading. The first one on here is real estate and personal property. So let's get this one in front of us. It is, ends in 01, 2022-04-01.
Does it be 05?
05.
Yeah, it says 05. Yeah, let's correct that. I think on all these, it is 05. We need to correct the agenda. You see it? Are you following what I'm saying?
It should be 04.
Right here.
Oh, okay, 0, it's supposed to be...
It says here on the actual, on the actual documents, it says 05, and on the agenda, it says 04.
That needs to be corrected, too. The address is wrong. That was why Seth was confused.
Okay. Let's hold just a minute, please, on the agenda. Chris has a really good point, the reason Seth was confused. Please go back to item G on the agenda, and it says rezoning request ordinances. 06 should be 105 Augusta Avenue, Seth. That's probably what's confusing.
Yeah, that's why we were...
Okay.
Jeff clarified.
So on your agendas for the record, please correct that. And so, and then 07 will be 1809 Third Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you for pointing it out. Thank you. Now, we're moving on. Did everybody make the correction on J? Roman numeral, or pardon me, letter J under Roman numeral 11 for the ordinances? It should be 02022, or O-2022-05-01. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, they should all be 05.
But do you see on the agenda what it says?
They're originally, the first reading was supposed to be last month, but...
Okay, so we changed it on the document.
Yeah, it should be 05.
Okay, so just make sure we have that. So the first one is real estate and personal property tax.
Mayor, if I may, before we start, as you all know, we weren't able to have the public hearing tonight. When we did make that decision, we weren't able to get it into the newspaper in time. Our newspaper runs on Wednesday, and our meeting's on Tuesday. So to meet the seven-day requirement, we would have to have it in a week before that, and we just weren't able to get it in on time. So, you know, we had that, kind of the opportunity for the public to speak tonight. But really, we've had a public hearing on three of the budget ordinances. The fourth one, there was a clarification we put out in the newspaper related to the water and the sewer rates. Originally, we put just like the percentage or just put what the residential rate was, but since it impacts all the rate classes, we put another ad in there, and you'll see that on the timeline. So we did want to hold off on that one and do a public hearing and a first reading at the meeting on the 24th, so that we're covered completely on that one.
For which ones is this?
Just the rate schedule, so the one that has the water, sewer, electric, lights, all those fees.
So we're waiting on that?
We're going to hold off till the 24th and do a public hearing for just that one on the 24th, and then you'll do your first reading on the 24th and adopt it, the regular council meeting in June. But the other three, we'll do a first reading tonight, and then hopefully adopt at the May 24th meeting.
John, I have a suggestion, but this is a council decision. We had the first, the public hearing on these first three ordinances. Is that correct?
Yes.
Real estate, cigarette tax, water sewer?
No, that'd be the budget. The water sewer electric one is the one that we had the clarification that we wanted to make sure we got in the paper that...
Okay.
And that's that we hold off on that one and do the first reading at the meeting on the 24th.
For clarity, and I ask council this, since we want to be pretty clear in what we're doing, and we know, I'm figuring out, but maybe people don't know, should we have the public hearing, then have the first reading on all these, and then move on with this?
If you do that, you will be passing the budget as an emergency ordinance, and that was...
Now, we don't want to do that. We can meet again and pass this. The budget does not have to technically be passed in the June. I don't want to push that, but I'm suggesting that it would be the right thing to have a public hearing for all these, even though we've had one to include them all. My thoughts.
If you do, you will have to pass all four of these as an emergency ordinance in June, because they have, you know, if you pass them this month, then they can go into effect within 30 days. If you pass them in June, they'd have to go into effect sooner. So you run into that compression of not 30 full of 30 days.
Okay, let me look here, John, to make sure I follow what you're saying. I'm trying my best to. So today's the 10th. Our next meeting is the 24th. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then our regular June meeting would be on the 14th, so that'd be the second reading. Okay, so I'm just thinking. I follow what you're saying.
So if you want them to go into effect July 1st, you'd have to pass it as an emergency ordinance.
I'd rather not do that, because that runs into technical difficulties.
And you can't do that with, you know...
How about the one we're going to have a first, or we're going to have first readings on all these tonight?
No, all of them but the utility, the rates one.
So that one is going to have to be passed?
That would have you pass as an emergency measure, wouldn't it?
Or the rates just wouldn't go into effect until 30 days from that. That's what would happen. You know, we pass it, you know, June 14th, they go into effect July. Bills are entered after like July 14th, so we may miss a month of revenue.
Are you talking about the electric rates?
The electric rates are staying, you know, they'd be part of that, but really, they're staying the same, so there's not really anything. It's more the water and the sewer.
That's your water and sewer proposing.
Yeah, it's all in one, you whole document. So I think there's also some changes to like the cost for an outside light or some of the wording on that, but it's all in one rate schedule.
Let me ask you something, John, not to, whatever. If we meet on the 24th, which we're scheduled to do, what is the, what is the next possible date before our June meeting at the 14th, which is Flag Day, I think? Anyway, could we meet and still pass these ordinances with a second reading and not have to have an emergency?
It's supposed to be at a regular scheduled meeting, so that's the issue.
Okay. Would it matter that much that your 30 days before it takes effect? I mean, are you that, as a budget, that...
Yeah, I mean, the budget has to be in place.
Right.
So...
Yeah, but the only significance is that it would not take effect until 30 days. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the rates wouldn't. They would go into effect later, but...
I mean, it seems like to me 30 days is not going to, I mean, if, well, I guess the budget isn't, you know. Counsel's thought, please.
According to this, I mean, so this, you're not changing real estate or personal property tax rates this year, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
And we've already had a public hearing on that, so we're good.
So cigarette tax does increase by the proposal. Okay, and then water, sewer, and garbage won't go into effect for 30 days anyway.
Right.
So you're really not, I agree with the mayor, you're really not, nothing is really going to be an emergency, because you're not changing, no real estate personal property tax rates changing, correct?
No, but like to pass the budget ordinance, if we wait till the 14th, and you want it to go into effect July 1, you have to pass it as an emergency ordinance, because if it's not passed as an emergency ordinance, it can't go into effect till 30 days after its passage. So to shorten that time period of when it can go into effect, you would have to pass it as an emergency ordinance.
How much revenue are you going to miss? Is that correct? I'm asking.
You could what?
Pass it as, I'm asking, John.
Yeah, you can, but that's, you know, where we got in the whole lawsuit last year that we're trying to avoid.
The lawsuit was more about how the voting went.
And it, this was also discussed at the hearing.
It was, I wasn't present, sorry. How, how much revenue are you going to miss in 30 days?
I mean, it's, I don't, I mean, it's still revenue that we've got to, you know, build up the water and sewer reserves for the, you know, those projects we're doing. And last year, we were three months behind. So when Seth asked about, you know, the revenue projections for next year, why they were kind of off, it was because we missed those three months of that additional revenue, you know, in this, you know, year so far. So it's, every month, it puts us farther behind on, you know, building those reserves.
What is council's pleasure? We have proposed, this is the first reading for real estate and personal property. Shall we go ahead with that?
If it's not changing.
It's not changing.
See that you're hurting anything to go ahead.
Okay. Let me get all these in front of me, please. Okay. 01, let's get this out of the way. That, we have, that's a resolution. Okay, we have 01, 02, 03, and we have 05.
We're going to have to read 03 tonight.
No, 03, 03 is the one I'm recommending we hold off.
03, we're going to hold off to, to May 24th. We'll have a public hearing. I think it needs a separate meeting, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Number, 03?
Yeah, when I start reading that, that's going to be, it'll take us on into midnight.
It's a lengthy document.
Yeah, it should take us on into midnight tonight.
So this is the one you want us to hold off on, is this correct, John?
Yeah, that's according to the schedule, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the right schedule.
Got to.
We have found this out, Seth, we've read them, and we did a round robin of readings, if it makes you feel any more comfort.
How's your reading skills?
I'm having some fun, but that's what it is.
Why do you read these?
To have them publicly read, that we literally are reading in the public, we were advised.
So the county ones don't, but the town ones do?
I'm just standing up, we were publicly advised, I mean, advised, Seth.
We never read them, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Well, we didn't used to, but we do now.
With the rate schedule, there was a, a change that happened two years or so ago that took it out of, not really compliance with the code of ordinances, but it didn't align with the code of ordinances.
Okay.
So to reenact it to align with the code of ordinances, we would have to read that to.
Oh, all right.
To read it, is that what you mean? I just want to be clear, Seth.
No, I just, y'all threw me a curveball, and that was a new one.
Well, we did a round robin, so we shared the wealth equally.
To catch your pay.
Wealth of reading, I'm sorry, I've got to stand up, please.
Yeah, we're definitely skipping three tonight.
All right, so, so we have a reading of the first ordinance, I have to stand up, I'm sorry.
I want to do the first one.
I know where it's going, I'll get the second one.
Well, you have the honors. Shall we go ahead with the reading of the first ordinance, please, Mike?
Go ahead, Mike.
Sure. Ordinance number 02022-0501, Title II, Administration, Chapter 35, Taxation, General Provisions, Amendment to Existing Ordinances. Be it ordained by the council of the town of Richlands, Virginia pursuant to 2.24 and 2.3.47 and 4.4 of the Town Charter, Section 3501A of the Town of Richlands, Virginia Code of Ordinances, Town Code and Virginia Code 58.1-1104 and 58.1-2503, Volume 2017, that the council hereby amends Section 35.03B and 35.04 of the Town Code regarding the real estate tax rate and the applicable penalty, and the rate of interest to be collected for the linked payment thereof to be applied to the assessment of real, real property located within the corporate limits of the town. 3503, when taxes due and payable penalty, A, the text of the subsection remains unchanged by this amendment, B, if person failing to satisfy such tax bill on or before December 28th following the mailing thereof shall incur a penalty of 5% per annum of the principal amount due. 35.04, interest, interest of the rate of one half of 1%, 0.5% per month shall be collected upon the principal penalty from January 1 of the year after taxes were due under 3503B. Interest will continue to accumulate monthly until the entire principal balance accrued penalty and accrued interest has been paid. Be it ordained by the Town Council of Richland, Town of Richlands, Virginia, that the above ordinance amendment go into effect 30 days from its passage. Motion was made by blank, a second by Mike.
Thank you, Mike. So Mike has read ordinance, oh, 2022, 05, 01.
And Mayor, if I could just address what Seth had brought up, once that is read, you know, we could do, if there is any rate changes, if nothing else is changing, we could do like we did in this ordinance, that section A is not changed. So any, after we read the rate schedule next time for the first reading and the second reading, any changes after that point where it's back in line with the code of ordinances, any change, that's the only thing you'll have to read, is the change.
I feel like this is because we just published the whole thing on the county, we just put the whole thing, we printed the whole entire ordinance in the newspaper, and because of that, we didn't have to read it at the meeting. I mean, that's just something to look into.
Right.
I, I will note that on the interest in here, that is in there, that's a little bit different from last year, it's because the way our interest was kind of written, it wasn't very clear. So, you know, most places, you know, you charge interest accrues every month, it was almost written away where it accrued just at the end of the year, and that's just not what makes sense, so we wanted to make sure we clarified it, that, you know, interest will accrue every month throughout the year. It's not fair if somebody pays theirs July 1st, and then somebody waits till December 28th, and they pay the same amount of interest. So that's the one thing we did clarify, that may be a little bit different from last year.
Thank you, John.
One other clarification was that the tax bill would be due on December 28th, that alleviates any kind of issues of running around a holiday. The 28th would always, you could run into, if that's on a Saturday, you know, somebody has all the way until the 30th to pay. And we didn't do that as the 31st, because the 31st is a holiday under the Town of Richlands. So the tax bills will have to be due by the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Do you want a motion that we have read the first, had the first reading, or just accept the first reading?
I don't think that's necessary for a motion.
So we've had the first reading, let it be recorded that Mike read it, please.
Thank you, Mike.
Done real well.
No, you didn't.
Oh. Next, we have, let me get the proper ones here. Let me get the right one.
Title II, Administration, Chapter 35, Taxation.
I want to get correct in front of me, okay?
Right here.
Oh, 05. I've got it, thank you, Jeff.
Got it, sure. Tax on cigarettes, we're good?
Smoke it.
Let's do it. Be it ordained by the council of the town of Richlands, Virginia pursuant to Richland's Town Charter, 2.24 and 3.47, Virginia Code 58.1-3830, that hereby enacts the following ordinance regarding the taxation of cigarettes which are sold within the corporate limits of the town. 3510, definitions, the following words, terms, and phrases when used in this chapter shall have the meaning described at the end of this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Agent means every local dealer and any other person who shall be authorized by the treasurer of the town, or his or her designated to purchase and affix stamps to packages of cigarettes under the provisions of this chap, chapter. Carton means a container of 10 packages of cigarettes with each pack containing 20 cigarettes. Cigarette tax appeals board means a three-person panel comprised of those members of the Finance Committee for the Town Council who will hear all appeals or decisions of the treasurer regarding the seizure of any property pursuant to this chapter. Dealer means every manufacturer, jobber, wholesale dealer, or other person who supplies a seller with cigarettes. Metered insignia, was that a Stephen King movie?
Yep.
Means any symbol printed by a meter machine upon such package under the authority of a treasurer or his or her representative or designated. Package means every parcel, box, can, bundle, or any other container of any cigarettes to which the Virginia revenue stamp is required to be affixed by under 58.1-1003 of the Code of Virginia in 1950 as amended, and which all, and in which retail sales of such cigarettes are normally made or intended to be made. Sale means every active transaction irrespective of the method or means employed, including the use of any machines or other mechanical devices whereby titled any cigarettes shall be transferred from the seller as defined in this section to any other person within the town. Seller means every, every person engaged in the business of selling cigarettes who transfers title, or whose place of business title to any such cigarettes is transferred within the town for any purpose other than resale. Stamp means a small gun piece of paper or decal to be sold by the treasurer, or his or her representative or designated and affixed by the agent to every package of cigarettes. It shall also denote any insignia or symbol printed by a meter machine upon which any such package, under the authority of the treasurer or his or her representative or designated. Treasurer means the town treasurer and every person duly authorized by him or her to serve as his or her representative or designated. State law references, State Cigarette Tax Tax Code of Virginia 58.1-1000, et sec, Local Cigarette Tax Code of Virginia 58.1-3830, 35.11, tax levied to rate. This is hereby levied and imposed by the town in addition to any and all other taxes which may be or have been imposed, taxed to be paid and collected as provided in this chapter on each and every sale of cigarettes made of tobacco or any substitute thereof occurring within the town. The tax is to be paid by seller, dealer, or other agent affixing or causing to be affixed to stamp to every package of cigarettes, in the kind and manner required in this chapter in all applicable rates as follows. The rate or amount of tax levy or imposed on cigarettes should be the rate of 25 cents for each 20 cigarettes or fractional part thereof. 3512, disposition of revenue. Revenue derived from the tax imposed by this chapter shall be deposited by the treasurer to the credit of the general fund of the town for utilization for such legal purposes as the Town Council may from time to time determine. 35.13, keeping and sale of stamps, duties of treasure. The treasurer shall acquire, keep, and sell necessary stamps to local dealers and other agents, and the stamps should be such denominations and quantities as may be necessary for the payment of the tax imposed by this chapter. B, in the sale of stamps under this chapter to a local dealer or other agent, the dealer or agent will be responsible for any cost which is incurred by such dealer or agent in affixing the stamp to packages of cigarettes. C, the treasurer from time to time may as often as he or she deems advisable provide the issuance and exclusive use of stamps of a new design and forbid the use of stamps of any other design. The treasurer is empowered to make and carry into effect such reasonable rules and regulations relating to the preparation, furnishing, sale, and redemption of stamps as he or she may think deemed necessary. In redeeming stamps from making refunds or destroyed stamps, the treasurer shall not in any case refund more than 90% of the face value of such redeemed or destroyed stamps. The treasurer is further authorized and empowered to prescribe the method to be employed, the conditions to be observed, any and unnecessary requirements not contrary to this chapter in the use of meter machines for printing upon packages of cigarettes and insignia to represent the payment of the tax and in lieu of stamps. D, in addition to the powers granted in this chapter, the treasurer is further authorized and empowered to, one, prescribe, dot, promulgate, and enforce rules and regulations regarding to the method and means to be used to cancellation of stamps, two, delegate his or her powers, his or her representatives, designated, or others, including the police officers of the town, three, determine the manner of taking inventory, fixing stamps on cigarettes, handing stock on the first day of July of each year, four, determine the manner of registration of any distributor, wholesaler, vendor, retailer, or any person selling, storing, or possessing cigarettes within or transporting cigarettes within and into the town for sale or use, five, determine any other matters pertaining to the administration and enforcement of provisions of this chapter. 3514, inspection of records, premises. The treasurer, his or her duly authorized, represented, and designated is empowered at reasonable times to examine books, records, invoices, papers, any distributor, wholesaler, vendor, retailer, or other person selling or storing or possessing cigarettes related to purchases, sales, et cetera, et cetera, and to examine all cigarettes in and upon any premises where such cigarettes are placed, sold, stored, offered for sale, or displayed for the sale by the seller. 3515, untaxed cigarettes, seizure of cigarettes and other property disposition, appeal. A, if the treasurer, his or her representative, designated discovers any cigarette package or carton subject to tax imposing on this chapter upon which such tax has not been paid to the town and upon which stamps have not been affixed in compliance with the provisions of this chapter, the treasurer, his or her duly authorized, represented, designated, or officer, any of them are hereby authorized and empowered to seize and take possession forthwith of such cigarettes which shall thereupon be deemed forfeited to the town. B, any property other than motor vehicles used in the furtherance of any evasion, the tax may be seized by the treasurer, or by his or her duly authorized representative or designated and confiscated. C, such cigarettes or other property referenced in paragraph B above may be sold by the treasurer and his or her representative or designated. Such sale may occur after written notices forwarded to the last known address of the former holders of the property so seized and is also posted on the front door of the town hall, municipal buildings, at least five days prior to the date given therein for the sale. Once sale occurs, the treasurer shall collect from the proceeds of the sale the tax due thereon, thereon, together with the penalty and the amount of 50% thereof and the cost according to such proceedings. Treasurer then shall pay the balance, if any, of such proceeds to the seller and whose possession of such forfeited cigarettes or other property were found. No credit for any of the sale, other, or other disposition shall be allowed toward any tax or penalties owed. D, the sale of any seized property may be stayed by the former holders of such property by their noting of appeal to treasurer's decision to the cigarette tax appeals board hearing after C tab, C T A B. Said notice of appeal must be in writing and shall be filed with treasurer's in five days of the treasurer's decision, a copy of which notice shall be provided to the appellant of the town, to the town manager. A hearing on said appeal before the C tab may, shall be scheduled by the town manager to occur within 30 days of the filing of the notice appealed by the appellant, at which hearing the appellant may present evidence on his or her behalf, subpoena witness in his or her behalf, and represented by council. The written decision of the C tab shall be forwarded to the appellant to the treasurer. The agreed party may appeal the said C tab decision upon written application filed with clerk of the circuit court within 10 days of the date of the issuing of the C tab decision. E, upon any appeal of any seizure of property by the treasurer, sale of any seized property shall be held in advance pending such termination by the C tab and any appeal therefront. F, the seizure and sale of any cigarettes shall not be deemed to relieve any other viol, any of the violators of the other penalties provided for in this chapter. State law reference, seizure of cigarettes, Code of Virginia 58.1-38326. 3516, purchase and use stamps, seller obligations. Every local dealer in cigarettes, A, every local dealer in cigarettes and every agent appointed under this chapter shall purchase necessary stamps from the treasurer to pay tax imposed under this chapter and shall fix or cause to be a fixed stamp the monetary value provided by this chapter to each package of cigarettes prior to delivering and furnishing such cigarettes to any seller who is not also an agent. B, nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to prece, preclude any dealer from authorizing and employing any agent to purchase and fix such stamps in his behalf in order to effectuate the provisions of this chapter. C, stamps shall be placed upon the package of cigarettes in such manner to be readily visible to the purchaser. D, it shall be the responsibility of every seller to determine that each package of cigarettes offered for sale has a proper stamp affixed there too in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. E, if inspection by the agents of the town discloses unstamped or improperly stamped packages of cigarettes, seller when such cigarettes were obtained from a local dealer shall immediately notify such dealer upon such notification, such dealer shall forthwith either affix to such unstamped or improperly stamped package, container, or item the proper amount of stamps, or shall be replaced such package, et cetera, with others to which stamps have been properly affixed. If seller who is not also an agent acquires or has in possession unstamped or improperly stamped cigarettes, the seller shall forthwith notify the treasurer of such fact. Treasurer, his or her representative or designated shall thereupon affix or cause to be affixed the proper stamps of such cigarettes at such agent's place of business, and the face value cost of such stamps shall be advanced by such seller to the treasurer. F, if any package of cigarettes found in the possession of seller without proper stamps thereon, and the seller is unable to submit evidence to the treasurer establishing that seller received such cigarettes within the immediately preceding 48 hours, and that he has not offended such cigarettes for sale, then it shall be presumed that such cigarettes are being kept in violation of this provision of this chapter, and that the seller shall be subject to the penalties provided in this chapter even though such seller is also an even though such seller is also an agent. G, the treasurer, by proper rules and regulations, may require every local dealer, agent or seller, to cancel stamps upon all packages of cigarettes such dealer's agents or seller's possession. H, every local dealer and seller shall maintain and keep for a period of at least two years such records of cigarettes receiving and sold by him as may be required by the treasurer upon demand. And the treasurer shall also make available means, facilities and opportunity to make such examinations at reasonable times. Thirty-five seventeen, presumptions, quantity grounds for seizure. Cigarettes found in quantities more than six cartons within town shall be conclusively presumed for sale or use within town and may be seized and confiscated if, A, they are in transit and are not accompanied by bill lading or other document indicating the true name and address of the cosigner or seller and or cosignee of purchaser and the brands of quantity of cigarettes so transported or, or are in transit and accompanied by bill lading or other document which is false or fraudulent in whole or in part. Or B, they are in transit and accompanied by bill lading or other document indicating, one, the cosignee or purchaser of the other state or district of Columbia who is not authorized by law or such other jurisdiction to receive or possess such tobacco products on which the taxes imposed by such other jurisdiction have not been paid unless tax for state or district of destination has been paid and the said products bear the stamp, bear the tax stamps of that state or district. Or two, a cosignee or purchaser of Commonwealth of Virginia but outside of the town who does not possess a Virginia Sales and Use Tax Certificate, a Virginia Retail Cigarette License, and where applicable, both a business license and a retail cigarette license issued by a local jurisdiction destination. Or C, they are not in transit and the tax has not been paid nor have approved arrangements for payment been made, provided that this subparagraph shall not only apply to cigarettes in the possession of distributors or public warehouses, which have filed notice and appropriate proof with the town that those cigarettes are temporarily within the town and will be sent to the cosignees or purchasers outside of the town in the normal course of business. State law reference, seizure of cigarettes, Code of Virginia fifty-eight point one thirty-eight thirty-two three. Thirty-five eighteen, counterfeiting, alternating, altering stamps prohibited. Shall be unlawful for any person to falsely or fraudulently make, forge, alter or counterfeit any stamp or knowingly or wilfully alter, publish, pass or tender as a true and any false, alter, forge or counterfeited stamps. Thirty-five nineteen, sale of untaxed products through vending machines. Shall be unlawful for any person to sell and dispense through a vending machine or other mechanical device any cigarettes upon which tax imposed by this chapter has not been paid and upon which evidence payment thereof is not shown to be each package of such cigarettes. Thirty-five twenty, penalties. Any person violating a provision of this chapter shall be deemed guilty of a class one misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than two thousand five hundred dollars or not more than twelve months in jail or both. Such persons found guilty of violation shall be required to pay a penalty for a late payment not to exceed ten percent per month, penalty for fraud and evasion of tax to, not to exceed fifty percent, and interest not to exceed three quarters of one percent per month upon any tax found to be due and unpaid. State law reference, Code of Virginia fifty-eight one thirty-eight thirty-two five, Section thirty-five twenty-one through thirty-five twenty-nine, reserved.
Thank you, Jeff. Let it be recorded that Jeff Hurst had the first reading of ordinance O twenty twenty-two zero five zero two. Thank you, Jeff.
So you read this, you're going to have to read all that again.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but I just, I think that's.
The second reading can be dispensed with.
Yes.
The reason for reading this one was the, the cigarette tax was adopted by the Town of Richlands but was not, like I said, in accordance with the Code of Ordinances. So now, you know, upon this reading and if you decide to dispense with the second reading and its adoption, then it will be in there to where if there's ever a future tax rate change, that would be the only thing that will need to be read is the change.
Gotcha.
Thank you. All right, John, we want to pass over for now. We had the first reading at the next meeting. Is that correct for O twenty twenty-two zero five zero three? But shall we go ahead with zero ordinance twenty twenty-two zero five zero five?
Seth, you want to do this one?
I'll read that.
It should be, it should be zero four, zero five was a typo on the agenda.
Okay, zero four. I was looking at that, zero four. So let's fix that. Sorry. All right. So this ordinance number O twenty twenty-two zero five zero four, is that correct?
Correct.
Town of Richlands, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget pursuant to the charter of the Town of Richlands. Article four Financial Administration, four point one Budgets and Appropriations, be it ordained by the Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, pursuant to three point four two and four point one B of the Town Charter and to Virginia Code one five decimal two hyphen two five zero three and one five decimal two hyphen two five zero four. Replace, I guess that is, Volume twenty eighteen, that it hereby adopts the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Full detail attached. Let it be recorded that Rod Curry read that first reading. So we will take up second readings, which we can dispense with at the next meeting on the fourth, on the twenty-fourth, is that right? And we will need to read ordinance ending in zero three. Is that correct?
Correct.
Let's put this in this stack. Okay, moving along on our agenda. Members of council, everyone present. We are on to the town manager report, audit engagement letter, miscellaneous, John.
The only thing I have is in the very back of your agenda package should be the agreement letter with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates. This is our auditor. I believe a month or two ago, council gave us to go ahead, to go ahead and engage with them and get an engagement letter. It's been signed and will be sent back to them. But as part of that, we were supposed to provide you all a copy with it. So at least you have a copy and understand what services they will be providing.
Any questions for John about the auditor, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates? Thank you. John, miscellaneous?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Council member reports these are non-voting items. Darrell?
The only thing I want, I appreciate Seth bringing up the, the AEP and maybe buying the town's power. And when you all meet with them, Seth, I would ask that you check to see what rate increases they might have come. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Darrell. Doug?
The only thing I've got is one of the citizens came up with, I think it's TCA, that one of the other towns had came up for, for them to collect back taxes. Could we ask the town manager to explore that? They collect them on a percentage. Could we ask the town manager to pursue that company?
John?
That's what council would like.
Council?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, John. TCA, is that right, Doug?
Yeah, TCA.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Anything else?
TCAAS.
T A C S. Okay, let's get, what does that stand for?
Tax collection.
It's a tax authority collection service.
Tax authority collection service?
Yeah.
Okay, it's one of those acronyms that.
Could, could we ask that, we have an answer maybe the next meeting?
I don't know the off time. Maybe the June meeting, perhaps?
I'll reach out and get one as soon as I can.
Yeah. Okay. How about the June meeting? Is that satisfactory?
That's fine. Maybe you might have something to do.
Sure.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Seth?
No, that's all I've got.
Mike?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Seth?
Uh, let's see. On, like, so when you come in to pay your bill, why are we closed? Why is the lobby closed still?
It's having to open back up yet.
Yes, sir.
There is a reason. I mean, there for a while, it was, they were open and then they were closing. It was just kind of, we tried to follow what other places were doing.
Can we open back up? It's real frustrating. President said the pandemic's over. So if we can.
I haven't given any thought. Yeah, we can open that.
Okay. If we can do that, I'd be super happy about that.
Thank you.
The only other thing that I have is like, so, you know, like with the Town of Abunim, when we pay our taxes, we can use, we use an online service. Like, it's super easy. I just go on there.
I take care of that.
You got that? We squared away? Great. Okay. It just makes it really nice. And if that's an option, it, things can go really smooth. And you can pay your taxes online. It's a lot easier than having to come do it anywhere else. I guess that's, that's pretty much all I have. And we do have our meeting, our first meeting with AEP, and I'll report back to you the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Seth. Okay. Anything else? You good? You good, Seth?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Kristin Thompson-Witt, your report.
I would just like to take the opportunity to thank you all for the opportunity to serve and for giving me this chance to be here. I appreciate it. I will do my best.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Jeff?
I'd just like to thank the town, you know, this past weekend, they had the prom and they had to sort of relocate at, at the last hour. So like I said, a lot of thanks to the police station for opening their doors for the high school prom. It's supposed to be at the Greenway Park, but I think with the weather and certain situations, they had to move inside. So I think it all ended up hopefully okay and they didn't, didn't make too much of a mess down there.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Mayor's report. My report is brief. I just want to add that I too appreciate it with the town's help for the Richlands High School students to have a prom, a very nice prom, well attended. I do have one thing I want to mention, and that is that on May the third, the town was invited to join the county and other counties in Tazewell to honor Jim Baldwin. And so A.J. Robinson had called me and asked me if I were coming, and I said yes. So if others weren't able to make it, I don't know, he was aware of it and he wasn't. Anyway, here's what I presented. I said, I wrote the resolution and here's what it says. Okay. And I'm going to pass this on. It's a coffee stained copy, personalized to the clerk, but I'd like to read to you what was honoring Jim Baldwin. For those who don't know Jim, he served this region for a long, long time. And no matter whether you like everything he did or not, becomes irrelevant when I thought he was a good guy. We didn't agree on everything, but that's life. And anyone who serves for fifty years deserves some recognition. So on behalf of the town, I presented this. Town of Richlands, Virginia, a resolution honoring James Jim Baldwin. Whereas the Richlands Town Council desires to recognize and honor James Jim Baldwin, Executive Director of the Cumberland Plateau Planning Commission, District, Planning District Commission, and whereas Cumberland Plateau Planning District Commission was founded in nineteen sixty-eight to improve the quality of life of the citizens in Buchanan, Dickinson, Russell and Tazewell Counties. And whereas James Jim Baldwin was hired in February nineteen seventy-two for the Cumberland Plateau and has devoted fifty years of dedicated service to the agency. And whereas during the past five decades, Mr. Baldwin has worked to advance and facilitate the completion of countless community betterment projects within the planning district, including substantially increasing the availability of clean drinking water, expansive deployment of high-speed broadband internet and improved wireless connectivity, as well as numerous downtown improvement initiatives that have transformed the economic prospects of towns throughout the district, among many other projects. And whereas Mr. Baldwin plans to retire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for his position as Chief Executive Officer of Cumberland Plateau Planning District. Now for, now therefore be resolved that the Richlands Town Council honors James Jim Baldwin with sincere gratitude and recognition of his fifty years of exceptional achievement, outstanding leadership and dedication to improving the quality of life of the citizens. They did this third day of May, twenty twenty-two, in my signature. I would please pass that to the clerk for the record. And I did have help with that. So I want to tell you, that isn't entirely my work, but I did find it necessary to write the resolution and did the appropriate thing. Is there any further business?
Mayor, before we adjourn, the copies of the you asked for, we have those up here.
Okay. Members of the audience, before you leave, if you'll, please pick up the copy that you asked for, they're ready. Thank you. Is there any further business?
Could those get passed down?
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry.
There are some copies coming by that we didn't have, I guess, monthly traffic summary, et cetera. Okay, so is there any further business before council? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.